So what do we have? What time is it exactly? Are we a little past? All right. All right, we'll call this meeting to order here and we want to welcome everybody to the June 21st Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, we will, well, first, if everyone notices, we have some guests here. And they're helping us facilitate the meeting, so this is a great thing. We always, as customary, start with a moment of silence. And I have one as well, but I understand Jessica has two. Does anyone else have any?
Yeah, I have one also.
All right. So Jessica, do you want to start, then Moke, and then I'll do mine as well?
I have two, but I'll start with the first one, and I think, can I get my microphone? Yes, I have two this morning, but there is a picture of the first woman that we're going to be honoring. Her name is Adalina Rico, and she immigrated from Mexico in 1976 with her husband with nothing but the clothes they wore. And together, they grew to be legends in the local agricultural community, experts in orchard and vineyard management while raising six children. Adalina left us this past week at the age of 75 after a long battle with cancer. Please share a moment of silence as we remember one of the strongest, most giving members of our community. And what's really interesting about this story is people are saying that a lot of their vineyards and orchards, Adalina's legacy is going to live on in them because of all the work that she did tending to them and caring for them. And my second one is very sad. So I want to just hold a moment of silence for Aubrey Jean Anne, and she was a little baby who died last week. And she lived in Supervisor Simon's district, or her family lives in Supervisor Simon's district. We will think of her and her family today.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Also have another passing in my district, which was Barbara Udnic, long-term, middle town resident. And she passed last week, so I just want to have a moment of silence for her.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Unfortunately, we seem to have a tough week last week, but on the 16th of June, Austin Bateman, who I believe was 13 years old, passed away unexpectedly. I know that that's tough times for his family and family and friends as well. I know that my kids, who went to the same school, knew him, and I want to make sure that we hold them in our thoughts and our prayers today.
Thank you. And I have one for Amanda Arnie, who was 24, and she was unfortunately involved in a hit-and-run. Someone had hit her and niece, and so we are, and I know a lot of folks are currently looking for the van that did not stop. And it's a 2013 Toyota Sienna minivan, and she was only 24. And it's very sad as these young folks are being taken from us, and so we want to give a moment of silence to her as well, so.
Okay, so everybody stand.
Yeah, let's stand. Would you like to lead us in the pledge? No? How about you? Would any of you like to lead us in the pledge?
I've got one over here.
All right, lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. What's your name? Bailey? Haley. Haley, thank you. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a consideration of extra items not appearing on the postative agenda. Is there anything that anybody has that would like to? Okay. With that, we'll move on to item five, which is our approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is our items that are considered non-controversial, and we usually pass them with one motion. And so if there is anybody that would like to pull any for consideration or discussion at a later time, then we can go ahead and do so. Do we have anybody from the board that would like to pull any?
I believe that you have posted enough.
Oh, I do. Okay. So no one from the board wants to? So, okay, and I think Joan, Joan, I have here that you would like to pull 5.11, 5.12, 5.15, and 5.19? Okay, looks like we'll pull those for a later time. Are there any others?
And 5.919.
All right. Any, what's that?
Just the three.
Oh, let's see, one, four. Yeah.
11, 12.
11, 12, 15, and 19.
15.
All right, anyone else from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
No idea.
Yeah, I don't either.
Oh, hold on. No.
All right. So I'll bring it back to the board for action. Would anybody like to entertain a motion on this?
We approve the consent agenda minus the items suggested by the chair.
Is that okay?
No.
I got it right here, Bruno.
I don't have the numbers. Items 5.1 through 5.10, and 5.1, I believe, 13, what was the other?
And 14.
14.
14, and then 16, 18, and 19.
No, 19.
17 and 18.
All right.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
I just need to call a timeout real quick. Remember, we told you when our county council looks up, it tells us something? That we were just told we needed to do something correctly, and we were trying to do it right, but we failed. I failed.
So every time we try and pass something, you have to have a motion? One supervisor has to offer a motion, and then another supervisor can offer a second, and then we can have a vote.
But do you ever have those times, like when your parents, you know your parents are watching you, and you still don't want to hear what they have to say, so you look away and you try not? Sometimes we do that, but she's really good at corralling us. All right. So let's see, we are at, are we at 910? So it looks like we can move on to our item 6.1, and we'll conduct these other items later, the pulled items at a later time. Put that back right there. And so our 905 is our Lake County Animal Care and Control, and our pet of the week. And so it looks like our pet is excited.
Oh, he's so cute.
The dog, the dog.
My name is Mary Pashke. I'm an officer with Lake County Animal Care and Control over at 4949 Helbus Drive. So here I have with me is a year-and-a-half-old shepherd mix. She is extremely playful, and she gets along with all other dogs. She's a little shy at first, but once you get to know her, she actually is really playful, especially right now. She's, she's ready to play with you if you want to try.
She tried to.
But overall, she gets along with everything, and she is an overall great dog that just wants to be loved.
Aw. Yes, they're hard to love.
But yeah, no, she, we've tested her with other dogs. She's been great. You want to say hi to the kids?
I'll pick them up here.
You want the kids want to come down and say hi? Just go slow.
Wait, wait.
It's okay.
Nope, no.
She's unsure about the stairs right this moment.
She's like.
Do one of the kids want to come down here and say hi? Come here. Look.
Oh, my gosh.
See, it's okay. Come here. It's okay. Just go slow.
He's like, back away. She's like, ah.
Come here. Come here. It's okay. Come here.
He's like, yeah.
Come here. It's okay. It's okay. It's okay, sweet pea.
He's like.
It's a lot at once. Just go slow one at a time.
Oh, yeah. Ready? I took three.
She's just in a need of a home, of anybody that's willing to love her and give her the time and energy that she needs.
And what's the number they could call to be able to?
What was that?
What's the number we could call to contact animal control? And I'm sure there's lots of other dogs and cats that are needing a home.
Yes, there is. There's all sizes of everything and all ages. So if you're looking for puppies, kittens, adults, we got it all.
So where does the animal control usually get the animals from that you bring here for us? If you can explain that to?
So we, it's mostly injured animals or strays that people find, or just things that are, we find abandoned somewhere. We don't pick up stray cats off the side of the roads or anything like that. We don't pick up healthy cats either. What we do is it's mostly, for cats specifically, it's injured or sick animals. And then for dogs, it's ones that have been left behind or on the highway, or somebody finds running around that stray that needs to be picked up. And then we try to get them back home to where they need to be first before we bring them back to the shelters.
And so sometimes we'll have to go get our animals at the animal shelter. If our dog jumps out of the yard, or whatever the case may be, we have to go pick them up or her up. But then sometimes they just, they're just wandering the town, and there's someone, they're just a random dog, and they don't have a home.
Yeah.
So they take care of that and get them shots and vaccinations.
Yep, they get vaccines and shots and everything before they get adopted.
Right, so.
Any other questions?
No. All right. Oh, you have one? Sorry, go ahead.
What's the dog's name?
Sadly, she does not have a name at the moment. What would you like to name her?
I don't know. I was just curious.
I think she needs a name. Who has a name for her?
Dixie?
Dixie.
I think that would be perfect. We'll go ahead and name her Dixie.
I like Dixie.
Aw. What do you think of that, Dixie?
Ah, she liked it.
She likes it.
Aw.
She's like, huh?
You like the name Dixie? We'll stick it with Dixie. All right, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to our 906, which is public input. With public input, of course, anybody can come up to the microphone for three minutes as long as they filled out one of the documents. And I think we have one, a couple right here. And speak for three minutes on an item that's not on the agenda. And commonly, we'll either refer them to that supervisor, the department, or we'll, when the item comes to the Board of Supervisors on a later date, we'll discuss it at that time. But in the meantime, if there's anybody that has any public input?
Good morning. My name is Greg Biancini. I live on 13th Avenue in Lucerne. I had a couple things I was going to go over this morning. I think what I'm going to do is I'm just going to turn this in.
Okay.
I'm going to pass this into you guys. And then, can I turn this in at the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
So I'm going to, I'm going to stay to the, to the end. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anybody else that has public input? And then, anybody on Zoom?
I do not see anybody.
All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and close public input at this time, and we'll be looking for the documents that you said you wanted to turn in, sir. And then, it looks like we are at, yes? We can conduct our 907, which is a presentation of proclamation recognizing the Friends of Bog's Mountain for outstanding contributions to outdoor recreation and economic development in Lake County, and presentation of plaque honoring Debbie St. Seer for extraordinary dedication to bringing back bogs. And this is conducted by Jessica Pyska, and I have to sign it. They were sitting over here as I was.
You know what? I just noticed Debbie hasn't, she's not able to be here today, but she also has a presentation.
Hand me a pen, a blue pen.
No.
And a desk. There's a desk, yeah.
I overlooked that. It's not on the agenda.
There we go. That blue pen is perfect.
It's blue.
Yep.
Yeah, that's blue.
Okay. Oh, so are we, did we need to come back to this, or is she doing a?
Well, she's here in Zoom.
Oh, okay, sorry. And I'm making sure that.
It's a good time.
Here's this. And so if you'd like to go ahead and start, we're ready when you are.
Okay, great, thank you. Can I share my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Here's this one, too, I think.
Thank you.
Right? I'll put this right here.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. I'm turning my video off just for internet purposes, just in case sometimes it gets a little wonky up here. First of all, thank you for having us on behalf of Friends of Bog's Mountain and their Board of Directors. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. Fortunately, was exposed to COVID, so just being responsible and not showing up there. Okay, a little bit about myself. My name is Debbie St. Seer. I am the Executive Director of the Redwood Trails Alliance. We're a nonprofit advocacy and trail construction organization in Napa, Lake, and Sonoma Counties. I also volunteer with the Friends of Bog's Mountain Board of Directors, and I added some of them a photo that I have because I might be the one giving the presentation and talking about this project, that this is truly a team effort. And without the Friends of Bog's Board on the backend constantly working and donating their time, this project wouldn't happen. I always like to start these presentations with a little bit about trails and why trails. We all have a story. We all have the reason why we go out on trails. Trails are not my background, but they've been a part of my life for all of my life. They've been my go-to. They're my balance. For me, I balance joy, greed, and recovery physically and emotionally by getting out on trails, like everybody. For me, I've always gone out instinctively. I didn't know anything about trails, but as different tragedies happened in my life, my instinct was always to go out onto trails and find that balance and get back out in nature and recover. After the death of my son 20 years ago, I immediately went out to trails, and it was kind of my first experience with really finding, finding my balance on trails. Two years later, when my daughter died, the same thing, I instinctually went outside, went to trails. Since then, I've had 18 surgeries, many of which were emergency life-saving surgeries, abdominal surgeries, to recover physically and emotionally. And to keep my sanity, I went out to trails, bogs being the main portion of those trails. After the wildfire, the valley fire came through and burned many of our communities and our homes. My instinct again was to go out to trails. But when I went out to bogs, there were no trails. After the post-wildfire recovery, our trails were gone. So myself, my community, everybody involved with this project and beyond, we didn't have anywhere to go to try and find that balance between the chaotic emotions that came with the valley fire. So we immediately banded together, and we got to work. We didn't know exactly how we were going to help. We didn't know exactly what we could do. Again, there's this helpless feeling after wildfire, just in general. We're all trying to rebuild. We're trying to relocate. We're recovering from a wildfire that tore through our town. But we knew we also needed to bring our trails back. So in February 2016, we started working with CAL FIRE. Bog's Mountain Demonstration State Forest was closed due to hazardous trees. They needed to do cleanup. But we knew we needed to get information to the community. We knew we needed to get our trails back, so we, we set out to find out what we could do in the meantime while we were waiting to build trails. The community wanted to know what was going on. So we, we found the best way that we could help was to get the word out. We could work with CAL FIRE. They would escort us in. They would let us know what was going on out there. Everybody wanted to know. Everybody wanted to know why they couldn't go in. They wanted to know the status of the trails, when trails were coming back. That was the constant question. Daily, we would get that question, no matter where we were. If you were in the store, it was always, when do we get our, our trails back? The trails are a critical component to the community of Cobb and beyond. Many events were held here. Many events were, were held that provided local economy. They boosted our businesses. One weekend, you could see the stores' shelves and harvesters would be wiped out because people would come and spend money in our town. And we lost all that with the fire and with the loss of our trail system. So what we did was, working with CAL FIRE, we decided to utilize social media, our email list, and newsletters, and we started writing articles about what was going on and keeping people updated on what was happening. In the height of getting this information out, our posts would reach over 20,000 people. There were so many people interested, not just in Lake County, but beyond, to see what was going on with bogs. We next needed to figure out how we were going to put in the trail system. None of us were trail builders. We had done some maintenance and pruning and, you know, some minor work on trails that were there before. But to restore a 22-mile trail system, we did not know what we needed to do. So we first signed an MOU with CAL FIRE. So Friends of Bog's Mountain and CAL FIRE came into a five-year agreement to restore the trails in bogs. We then contracted with a master trail builder to teach us how to build trails, but also to teach us how to teach how to build trails. We knew we wanted community involvement. The community wanted to be a part of rebuilding. Rebuilding trails after a wildfire, it's kind of a tangible to an intangible feeling that you have inside. So it gives you something to do with your hands. It gives you something, a feeling that you're, you're helping in what seems like a helpless situation. So during training, we needed to learn basic fundamentals of trail construction. We needed to learn about drainages. We needed to learn about erosion, armoring wet areas, bench cutting, clearing slash. There was a ton of slash that needed to be cleared, a lot of chainsawing for the, a lot of logs that were in the way of the corridor of the new alignments for the trails. So we also pulled in people who would learn how to build trails, but also be crew leaders for when we started holding, holding volunteer workdays. One of the, the main ways that we got started, we knew we wouldn't be able to build 22 miles by hand. That's a lot of trails. That's over 116,000 feet of trail that needed to be put in. So we started researching and talking to our master trail builder, and we learned that we really needed to get a mini excavator. So we got a Bobcat E10. We had a generous donation from the Cowpine Corporation in 2019 that purchased the tractor for us, and we were lucky enough being a nonprofit. We got a significant discount, which helped us out a lot because we knew the trails were going to be expensive to put in. Volunteers are the heart of the community. Without volunteers, this project wouldn't happen. To get their inputs, their help, to provide them, again, a means to use their hands and to feel like they're contributing and in something that is tangible and something you can see the end to. Our volunteer days are generally from five to 100 people. When we first got started, everybody was motivated. They wanted to come out. There was a lot of cleanup. And our usual trail days now are, are average about 20 to 30 people. And then if we have a large project, then we'll bring in a larger amount of people. On the days where we had 100 volunteers, we had corporations like REI who came in and helped fund that. We, during that time, were able to build 1.2 miles of trail in one volunteer day. So in less than six hours, we got 1.2 miles of trail built. Volunteer logistics. Volunteer days are a lot of fun, getting the community involved. It helps with the community. It helps us. It helps the forest. There's a lot of logistics. So a lot of that backend work that I was telling you about with the Friends of Bog's Board, there's a method to successfully have a volunteer day, and that is finding a project that will be interesting, usually building new trail, and having something that can be finished that volunteers can use as soon as they're done. They can go hike it and go check it out, and that helps to make it successful. But it does take a lot of work and a lot of logistics in the setup and the, the post-volunteer day cleanup with cleaning the, cleaning the gloves, cleaning the tools, keeping everything As a nonprofit, we are not just sitting on money. We're, like many nonprofits, we are scrambling around for money constantly. We're funded through private donations, through memberships to Friends of Bog's Mountain fundraising efforts and grants. So far to date, the total project cost has been about $183,000. Many of our partners either donate in money, or they donate goods that we can raffle off or in any way that they can support. Sometimes it's even just hosting a volunteer day. Without our partners, we wouldn't be in existence. We unfortunately, in the middle of this project, like many, many places, COVID shut us down. We had just gotten really into a groove of having regular trail workdays. Sometimes they were weekly, sometimes they were monthly, and we could no longer do that when we had the lockdown. So we had to reduce down the trail crews that, that came out. So the paid trail team that came out, they had to be in small crews and be separated from each other. We, in the beginning, could hold really small volunteer days, so six people or less. Funny enough, we learned that a mocc cloud or a shovel was six feet distance, so that's kind of the distance you stay in trail building anyway. So we were able to pull off a couple of volunteer days before we were completely shut down. But during that time, we also lost all of our funding. All the grants that we were going after that year had shifted, and we received words that they were shifting that money to COVID recovery, as most people were doing. So a lot of our grants and donations, nobody knew what was going on. But that didn't stop us. In 2022, we made a comeback. We held a fundraiser, and I'll show you this brief video, which is kind of, it was the kickoff of our fundraiser in February 2022.
No sound.
Okay. That's not critical, then. We'll carry on. So it was a cool video. It had a lot of really good footage of bogs and, you know, the burn and some of the recovery of the trees, and just kind of talks about our project. We launched a fundraiser in February 2022. We had a 10-day fundraiser where we did a bike giveaway that was donated by specialized bikes. We raised $80,000, and we're happy to say that since then, we have added four new miles of trail this year. So the, the team and volunteers built in February and again in April. Now we have over 10 miles of multi-use trails, and we do still have another 12 miles to go, so we still have a lot still on this project. We're really grateful for the fundraising and the community for stepping in. We're also super proud to announce we were able to bring an event back. Bike Monkey Bog's Eight-Hour Race, which is a race that was held in bogs for 11 years up until the valley fire, came back in May of 2022. There were over 500 people who attended. There were 400 riders who rode in the eight-hour race, and yes, they ride for eight hours in a, in a loop. And we had about 200 people who stayed and camped and spent money in the town of Cobb and a critical part of our economic recovery since the valley fire. So with all of that, with the trails returning, hope is returned, life is returning to the forest. It's beautiful out there, and if you haven't been out there, I really encourage you to go out and check out the trails and check out the, the trees that are coming back. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. As you can see, this is just, this has been an emotional journey for so many of us, rebuilding the trails and kind of helping the forest recover from the wildfire. So, you know, before the fire, we used to go out to the forest, and the forest would take care of us. And you would go out there to get that calm feeling when you're in nature. Do you get that calm feeling? You feel really good when you're out in nature? It's really, and, and then when that nature is gone, and then you have to step in and care for that, care for the forest and volunteer and be there to help. It's, it's just interesting how that relationship shifts over time. So. So um, one of the things that we talk about for whole person health is um getting out in nature and getting exercise, and that takes care of your mind and your physical body and all of the things that we need to be a really healthy person. So I want to thank um the Friends of Boggs and Debbie for all of their dedication over the years. And we have a proclamation, and I'm gonna have, can we all read this one? So you gotta read into them?
Um.
Can I just read the whole thing?
Yep. Um, "The Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California Proclamation Recognizing the Friends of Boggs Mountain. Whereas the Friends of Boggs Mountain was formed as a five, 501(c)(3) charitable organization in December 2002, and for the past two decades, they have embodied their mission to enhance visitors' experience in the forest, foster educational programs, help with the development of facilities, and assist with maintenance and instructional improvements, bringing far-reaching community benefits and... Whereas over their history, the Friends of Boggs Mountain has helped build and maintain three, 34 miles of new and legacy trails, created trail maps, hosted educational events, organized guided hikes, installed signage, built an interpretive trail with signs describing flora and fauna, ensuring availability for a permanent bathroom in the parking area, and financed and built an informational kiosk. And whereas Boggs Mountain Demonstration State Forest became a regional center for our active recreate, recreation? Recreation, driving significant economic activity throughout Lake County and... Wait. Where am I? Um. Whereas since the valley fire consumed over 90% of the forest, Friends of Boggs Ma- Mountain has taken responsibility for restoring the trail system, which was fully destroyed as a result of the confluence of wildfires, salvage lodging, logging operations. Whereas over 10 miles of new legacy trails have been completed with the Friends of Boggs Mountain partnering with the Redwood Trail Alliance. Volunteers and professional contractors to implement a bold vision for reconstruction trail system, relentlessly, relentlessly fundraising in the face of rising trail design and construction costs. And whereas the Friends have, the Friends have motivated significant financial and volunteer support, including major contribu- contributions from Cal Fire, REI, Calpine, and the County of Lake and the Redwood Trail Alliance while building relationships to support efforts to reestablish Boggs as a preferred destination for hikers, mountain bikers, and equestrians. And whereas to no recent partnership has proven more, provide, what's this?
Pivotal.
Pivotal than the Redwood Trail Alliance under the insignificant leadership of Debbie.
Insightful. Insightful.
Insightful. Neck, um, leadership or something. Now, it be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake to hereby commend and applaud the Friends of Boggs Mountain for... Re, what's this?
Resilience.
Resilience in the face of challenges, inflicting commitment to realize, realizing a brighter, more economical bri- vibrant future for the Lake County residents. Passed and adopted this 21st, the day of June 2022.
Yep. We found it. I want to know if any of you scouts have been to Boggs Forest. Have you gone on a hike there yet? What? Our Daisy has? Have you been to Boggs Forest? No, your mom says you have. Well, maybe we could organize a hike there all together, and then you could go out and visit the forest. And you can see the areas that didn't burn, and you can see the trees that are growing up in the last seven years. Some of those trees are taller than me now. This is pretty incredible. Um, do you want to say anything about?
Um, I mean, I go to Boggs a lot. I was just in Boggs yesterday, riding my bike. I'm done.
So we're very grateful for all of the work um of the volunteers and um the funders and the partners. It's been an incredible effort. And we came across some of these retro plaques a couple months ago, and I have one for Debbie. It says, "The county, the Lake County Board of Supervisors commends Debbie St. Seer for extraordinary dedication to bringing back Boggs, June 21, 2022."
Thank you very much.
Can we get a photo of that?
Sure. Yeah. Want to come, come in?
I'm good.
Oh, oh. I was, I was following her. I was following. Yeah, so was I.
Keep smiling, Debbie. Keep smiling. Got it. Perfect.
Thank you.
Yay, Zoom.
Is there anyone from the public would like to say anything on this item? All right. We'll bring it back to the board and uh thank you again for that. Was there anything else?
No, I just wanted to share the story with all of you. I know I talk about it a lot, and um sometimes it's just more important to hear from other people and see the pictures and really understand the story and the importance.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, it's a, it's, it's very nice to see the, you know, the stewardship, you know, happening, and then people do use those areas for things of, you know, so, thank you. So we'll move on to our 6.4, which is our 9:10 a.m. presentation of proclamation recognizing the Girl Scouts of Lake County, and this is, this will be done by Supervisor Pisca.
Hey. Well, normally what we would do is call everybody up here.
Yeah.
But you're already up here, so let's call your leaders up, and maybe they can come stand over here by me while I read this off. Anybody else? Is there anybody else here that was a Girl Scout? Want to come up? Okay. Susan? She was.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, everyone's good. So "The Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California Proclamation Recognizing the Girl Scouts of Lake County, California. Whereas March 12th, 2022 marked the 110th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, the largest and most impactful leadership program for girls in the world. And whereas since our beginning, Girl Scouts has emphasized public service and civil engagement and has fostered a sense of community in girls. And whereas, Girl Scouts work to champion the ambitions, cultivate the talents, and develop the skills of girls who confidently pursue their passions and make the world a better place. And whereas, girls say that Girl Scouts supports their mental health and is accepting, is an accepting space, safe space, where they feel free to be themselves and where leaders and other girls are sources of support during difficult times. And whereas, Girl Scouts offer girls 21st century programming in science, technology, engineering, and math STEM, the outdoors, entrepreneurship, and beyond, helping girls develop invaluable life skills. And whereas, the Silver Award is the highest award a cadet Girl Scout can earn as they take on projects that have a measurable and sustainable impact on a community by assessing a need, designing a solution, completing a project, and inspiring others to sustain it. And whereas, Alana Bo- Alanya?
Elena.
Elena Boyd, Emily Anderson, and Clara Anderson Reyes of Kelseyville, California, earned their Silver Award this year by designing and installing wine barrels painted with different designs for their sustainable take-action project of recycle bins. And whereas, more than 50 million women, trailblazers, visionaries, and leaders are Girl Scout alums who have made the world a better place. And Girl Scouts of Lake County, California serves nine active troops and 63 Girl Scouts in the county's service unit number 142. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby commend and applaud the Girl Scout movement and the Girl Scouts of Lake County for providing girls with a safe, inclusive, all-girls space where they can honor their skills, where they can hone their skills, and develop leadership activities, passed and adopted this 21st day of June 2022." So Linda, read in, is our service unit leader. Do you want to say a few words?
Uh, the Girl Scout program is very important to the girls of Lake County. There's very little resources for them to really engage in, large corporations, things like that. So with these troops, we try to bring things to them that they can experience that they would never be able to experience otherwise. So um our cookies, thank you for buying them, because they do help us go to camp, help us do our projects, uh, and we are getting ready for our nuts and candy sales. Yay. Anyway, and so um my troop started in uh 2009, and one of, I have three girls going to be ambassadors next year, so those are the 11th and 12th grade girls. And so Clara Reyes Anderson, Anderson Reyes has been with the Girl Scouts for 13 years. So, so I am very proud of them, even though they don't like to wear their uniforms out in public. So, anyway, I just want to say they have done so many things, and uh if anybody wants to know anything about Girl Scouts, they're welcome to get in touch with us.
And thank you, Linda, for all you do, and thank you to the parents and the leaders because we wouldn't be able to have these troops and um support these scouts in the ways that, that you all do without your involvement. And it does, it takes a lot, but it's important work, and I believe in it too. So this year, we're doing something very special. We're going to honor our Silver Award recipients. And the Silver Award is the second highest award that you can earn as a Girl Scout, but you can only do it while you're a cadet. And a cadet is a sixth, seventh, or eighth grader, and it usually takes most of the three years to do that work. So Clara Anderson Reyes. She is not here?
No, she went to church camp.
Oh, she went to church camp? Okay. Well, we're going to honor her. Um, can give that to you, Linda?
Thank you.
Okay. Emily Anderson? Come on down. Congratulations. And is it, it's Alanya? Elena? Elena Boyd? There you are. Congratulations. Okay. So, girls, tell us about your project and um what you did to earn this amazing award.
So our, our project was uh to have recycle bins down in Lake County because there weren't any, and so we used reci- uh wine barrels to turn into a recycle bin. And it was a lot of hard work, and I'm happy that we did it. We put them in Kelseyville, they're at Kelseyville, because the trash, the trash bins were being overfilled, so we're like, oh, we should do that because recycling is better for the community.
Are you noticing a difference now that they've been installed?
Yeah. There's a lot of people using them.
And Linda, do you want to say anything more about the Silver Award?
I just want, since we're public, the people know that if Girl Scouts come and ask for help, please help them. Uh, we have very little resources of being able to get funds for these things, and it took us a long time, and a lot of people that we approached were unwilling to help. So it took them a long time to actually find some barrels, help to cut them in half, help to sand them. These girls have never used all this equipment. So uh we do want to thank Dustin Papst of Papst Construction. He did uh actually find the barrels for us because we could not get them any other way. But we want to please just help support Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, any of the youth organizations, especially in Lake County, where there, like I said, are very few big places that will help them. So they need help.
And thank you, um, thank you for all you do. And so um do you want to, let's take a group picture. Does everybody want to come down?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, and you're ready for, are you ready for your tour?
No.
I so appreciate you all coming and helping us start our meeting today.
I'd see, I, I, I know. And it does, I changed it so it's not squeaky no more.
And parents and leaders, you're in.
Get on it.
Can you see him all?
Yeah. We can do this. Okay, ready? Okay, are you almost ready? That was good. Thank you.
We want to thank you for coming and being a part of our meeting. And I'll have to say, I'll have to say today was very special for me. Uh, I came in very sad because four months ago, my mom had passed. Today would be her birthday to be 62. I came in kind of bummed out, but now you've lifted my spirits, so thank you very much.
Somebody forgot their glasses.
There we go.
All right.
All right. Think, yep, we're good to go. There we go. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on that item? I, I know that uh... All right. Next is our 6.5, our 9:30, uh, public hearing on account and proposal assessment for 13204 Second Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California. And uh Marcus and Tina, if you'd like to come up and uh...
Go from there.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, really? Yeah. Thank you. Oops.
All right, we're ready to begin?
Yes. Whenever you are.
I think we need to be sworn in first.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
A good morning to the board. My name's Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager of the Code Enforcement Division, and I'm accompanied here today by Tina Ransburg, one of our code enforcement officers. And upon completion of an abatement, we come before the board to give an account and a proposed assessment for a lien against that property. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tina to provide an account.
Good morning. Um, the property we are discussing today is 13204 Second Street in Clear Lake Oaks, California.
able or willing to correct the violations, code enforcement moved forward with the abatement process to eliminate any health and safety issues. In May 2022, we obtained an inspection and abatement warrant from a Lake County Superior Court Judge, and on May 3, the abatement was conducted by Leonard's Hauling and Tractor Service to remove the inoperable vehicles and other debris. And Leonard's Hauling had to subcontract to Select Environmental to remove the asbestos from the burnt structure because upon having an asbestos test completed, it was revealed that some of the material did contain asbestos on the property. On the left is the before picture, and on the right is after the lot was cleared. And these are some more after pictures of the property once it was abated. In May 2022, compliance was attained, and the property was returned to its original state. The total cost for abatement was $2,500 for Leonard's Hauling. Select Environmental was an additional $8,945, and the reason that the cost is so high to abate asbestos is because the only approved dumping site is located in Vacaville. And so you have to have special certification to remove asbestos material, and it has to be dumped at a specific location. And the administrative costs were $452.54, so staff recommends the Board of Supervisors confirm the assessment of $12,392.54 and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. After a recordation, it shall be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment roll as the special assessment. The cost of the abatement services are $11,940, and the administrative costs on this case amounted to $452.54.
Is it possible to go back to the last slide? I just wanted to add something that there, I believe there was also a payment for a contractor to see if there was asbestos, because I see on here that there was one for $495, and I just wanted to at least put it in public record for the, what everyone else is viewing. And what that, that was what it was about, it was testing to see if there was asbestos, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Is there any questions from the board? Anybody on, anybody in the public or on Zoom? All right, so we'll bring it back to the board for action. And if anyone can entertain this motion, that'd be great.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed assessment of $12,392.54 for the property located at 13204 Second Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and entertain a five-minute break briefly, and then come back to our next item, which is the 6.5. Oh, no, I'm sorry, 6.6. All right. All right, welcome back, everybody, from our short break. We will now move on to our item 6.6, our 945, Presentation on California Advancing and Innovating Medical, Medi-Cal, CalAim. And this will be presented by Behavioral Health, and Director Metcalf is here.
I hope I not have, I don't have to drive this thing. Matthew told me he would run it for me. Oh, look, there it goes. Perfect. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the Director of Behavioral Health Services. So I thought it was time to bring this to your board. There are a lot of changes happening at the state level that are affecting not only Behavioral Health Services, but other departments here in the county. And as Supervisor Crandall just said, this is CalAim. It's, it's the California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal Initiative. And I shouldn't say initiative singular because there, there are a lot of initiatives involved in this. And so what I'm going to attempt to do today, and I'll try to keep it brief, is to give you a very high-level overview, like a 30,000-foot or higher overview of what this, what, what this means to my department. I'm going to, I'm going to speak to this from, from a behavioral health perspective. But as I said, there are other departments involved that may want to chime in as I, as I go through this, but I'm really speaking to this from, from my department's perspective. And I'm by no means an expert on this because this has been, this has been a bit of a moving target and an evolving thing that, that has, that has started actually in January, is when the CalAim initiatives actually rolled out. And there are subsequent initiatives that are, that are rolling out later, which I'm going to talk to during this presentation. And I apologize, I literally, you could probably read it from here. I scripted this out because I didn't want to forget anything, so I apologize if I have to read some of this because I don't want to miss anything. So if we could move to the next slide, which, which points out, these, these are the, these are particular, the particular initiatives, CalAim initiatives that are going to affect Lake County Behavioral Health Services, and not just Lake County Behavioral Health Services, but all Behavioral Health Services departments throughout the state. And so I will talk through each one of these points. I'm not going to read them because I don't like it when people read the slides. So if we could move to the next slide, I will talk about the first point, Population Health Management. So we, Lake County Behavioral Health Services, will be required to implement a, a person-centered strategy that includes assessments of clients' health risks and health-related social needs. This particular initiative will focus on prevention and wellness, which, you know, we're already doing a lot of that, along with coordination of care across the different service delivery systems. It's, it's exciting to see this because I like the whole upstream approach, approach because this is where, where we've been trying to move for a long time. Instead of being, you know, reactive, we want to be proactive, and I really appreciate the, the Department of Healthcare Services rationale around this, that we need to try to alleviate problems before they occur. The data-driven piece, I know some board members might be very interested in that, and I'm very excited about that piece of it, too, because, as I've mentioned before, you know, we are, we're one of a few pilot counties in the state of California that are entering into a new electronic health record system, which is being driven by the California Mental Health Services Authority. And we are one of a handful of counties that are part of this, and this electronic health record system pilot program will go into effect in January of 2023, and we're very excited about that because it will support this whole population health management piece. Next slide, please. So Enhanced Care Management. This really is going to focus on the adult, high utilizers of, of the systems and programs in, in our county. And I say adult because right now, this is specifically for the 18-plus age demographic. How this is going to work, I mean, this is going to be more of an in-person engagement with clients, meeting them where they are, and, and engaging them in, in, in what's familiar to them, that they can access programs and services, clinical or non-clinical, which is kind of a new thing for us. Partner Help, Partnership Health Plan began doing this in January. Behavioral Health Departments throughout the state are required to start implementing this on July 1 of this year. And although, as I said, this really focuses on adults, the children piece will, will go into effect in July of 2023. So this Providing Access and Transforming Health Path, as we say, this is, this is a big deal. It's a, it's a five-year, $1.85 billion initiative to support not only, you know, county organizations, but community-based organizations, hospitals, the tribal community, in order to support all of this in, in implementing these CalAim initiatives. And a lot of this involves what we call whole-person care, and I was tuned into the meeting earlier today, and I was struck by what Supervisor Pisgus was saying about, the Boggs Forest thing was, that was an amazing presentation, but there was a comment about whole-person care or, or how important something like a trail system helps us with our, with our mental health or behavioral health. So I, I appreciate you bringing that up. That was pretty cool. Next slide, please. Community Supports. This, if any of you have looked into any of this CalAim stuff, is also referred to as in lieu of services. It's, it's really about enhancing and improving what I mentioned before, this whole wraparound service approach that, that involves, you know, supportive services around housing, medically tailored meals. It really plays a fundamental role in, in meeting our clients' needs around health-related services that, that really determine and address the social determinants of health. Next slide, please. So this, this is really fancy, Behavioral Health Delivery System Transformation. The, the California Department of Healthcare Services plans to strengthen the state's behavioral health continuum of care, really by promoting a better integration of physical and, and mental health services and programs. And that's pretty revolutionary because they're so tied together. If, and as you may have heard me say before, I mean, if you don't have proper mental health, you don't have good physical health. They go hand in hand. And so this particular initiative is, is designed to streamline existing policies, improve access to behavioral health services, and really also simplify how these services are funded, because it's, it's pretty complicated right now where, where the funding comes from to, to provide both mental and physical health services. And so it, this really supports also the integration of, of, of mental illness and substance use disorders treatment, which that's kind of one of the overarching goals of this as well, because you, we, we talked about the, the regional model, the drug Medi-Cal regionalization model, which had to do with the 1115 drug Medi-Cal waiver. This, this is a big part of that because the state's goal, the Department of Healthcare Services' goal is to truly integrate mental health and substance use disorder services by January of 2027, which that's, that's a pretty big deal because it makes, it make, it only makes sense. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as, as we know, folks who are now, or who have spent time in jails, correctional facilities, et cetera, are at a, they're at a much higher risk of injury or death than, than the general public. So the key to addressing this problem is, is to ensure that, that, that those that are in these facilities are, are enrolled and engaged in Medi-Cal before they're released, so that they can access so many services. What this also speaks to is if those that are not eligible for Medi-Cal, we will be charged, we and other partner departments. Sheriff Martin. I mean, we will need to be working together to figure out if they're not eligible for Medi-Cal, what other avenues and programs and services would these folks be eligible for? This particular piece of this will go live January 2023. So there are already conversations happening around this, but there's a, as, as you can see, these are pretty lofty goals and initiatives, and there's a lot of planning that needs to go into this. So I, I just, a lot of this is still new to me, too, so I'm, I'm worried about any questions you may have, but we'll just keep moving through this, and I'll do the best I can to answer them. Next slide, please. So this is one, this is one of my favorites, Payment Reform. This, this is huge. This is slated to go into effect by July of 2023. You've heard me talk about cost reports and fiscal reports, and, and yay, my department finally got caught up on them late last year, but this is going to, this is supposed to fix some of that. It's going to turn, it's going to turn it from more of a cost-based reimbursement for services model to a value-based reimbursement model, which, as I mentioned earlier, will, will integrate more of the behavioral health and physical health piece of it. So we, in theory, what this says is that we will have more flexibility to be able to bill for even more services with, with much more financial flexibility than we ever had before. I, I do want to add here that I am the, I'm the co-chair of the County Behavioral Health Directors Association Financial Committee, and this has been a hot topic because the state is, is so far behind in, in auditing all the county's cost reports that even though we're caught up, the state isn't caught up. And so their goal is to get this done by July of 2023 so that they can implement this new type of cost reimbursement. And so I'm, needless to say, I'm very excited about it because I think it's going to offer us more, much more flexibility in the programs and services we can, we can, we can be, for which we can be reimbursed. So I'm, I'm very excited about this. Next, next slide, please. Peer Support. So I'm, I have asked, and I hope he's here somewhere, I've asked Scott Abbott, our, our Mental Health Services Act and Housing Program Manager, to speak to this because this, this also is a, is a, is a huge component of these CalAim initiatives that I'm talking about. And Scott, are you, are you here?
He's in the attendees. If we can get him moved over to panelists, then yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And he's on his way.
Excellent. Yeah, I don't have any notes about this one, so it's all up to him.
I see his hand up in the attendees area. There we go. I think he's moved over. Yep, he's, he's in the panelist area now.
And so their goal is to get this done by July of 2023, so that they can implement this new type of cost reimbursement. And so I'm, needless to say, I'm very excited about it, because I think it's going to offer us more, much more flexibility in the programs and services we can, we can be, for which we can be reimbursed. So I'm very excited about this. Next slide, please. Peer Support. So I have asked, and I hope he's here somewhere, I've asked Scott Abbott, our Mental Health Services Act and Housing Program Manager, to speak to this, because this also is a huge component of these CAL-AME initiatives that I'm talking about. And Scott, are you, are you here?
He's in the attendees. If we can get him moved over to panelists, then yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And he's on his way.
Excellent. Yeah, I don't have any notes about this one, so it's all up to him.
I see his hand up in the attendees area. There we go, I think he's moved over. Yep, he's in the panelist area now.
Sorry. Hello, good morning. Peer Support. CAL-AME seeks to improve quality outcomes, reduce health disparities, and transform the delivery system, as been described as the purpose. CAL-AME enables clinical care to be paired with a range of non-medical services. These services, which will be reimbursed by Medical, include housing supports, medical respite, personal care, medical tailored meals, and peer supports. Peer support specialists provide recovery-oriented, culturally appropriate services that promote engagement, socialization, self-sufficiency, self-advocacy, promote natural supports, and are trauma-aware. Studies have verified the effectiveness of peer support, and it's often complementary with clinical services. SB 803, known as the Peer Support Specialist Certification Program Act of 2020, recognizes the benefit of peer support provides to individuals and families with mental health and substance use difficulties, and the increased diversity and effectiveness peers bring to the health workforce. Lake County has chosen to opt in into peer certification, and will therefore be able to seek Medical reimbursements under this new benefit for services. Staff are currently in the process of becoming certified, including grandparenting in. Peer support staff will continue to work with those in need, including working at the peer support centers around the community. Although each has a focused population that as culturally sensitive services are provided to, they are also open to all. Peer support staff will also continue, or will be working as access points for a homeless coordinated entry system, and our Pathways Hub. These programs are designed to help vulnerable community members get into the services that they need from providers across the county. The Pathways Hub will also be supported by CAL-AME, which itself is a presentation that we'll probably do later with the board. Peer support staff also accompany, will be accompanying, or are accompanying our outreach and engagement services with our new outreach van. And finally, we also have volunteer peers through Canuck Day Senior Support that are going out into the homes of our older adults throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Next slide, please. So CAL-MHSA, the California Mental Health Services Authority, they have been extremely helpful and instrumental in helping counties throughout the state navigate this whole thing. And we're one of them. We have leaned heavily on this organization to help us figure all this out, and how are we going to do it? You know, as a matter of fact, your board recently approved an agreement with the California Mental Health Services Authority around this behavioral health quality improvement program that specifically covers these CAL-AME benchmarks around payment reform, policy changes, and data exchange. And we're very grateful to them, and in hindsight, it might have been a good idea for me to have invited someone from CalMesa to come and speak to this. But they, they're also the ones that are helping us with this electronic health record system. They've just been an amazing resource, helping us with this, because this has been, this has been a lot. Next slide, please. I think I'm going to the next slide. Yes, oh, okay, yeah, for more information. So, you know, I've outlined some timelines, and the timelines have sort of been, again, the Department of Healthcare Services kind of wavered on some of these timelines, they pushed some back, moved some forward. But really, what my presentation here is, is I just want to give the board kind of a heads-up on what's coming down. I don't have a lot of answers yet, because we're still trying to figure a lot of this out. But really, the long-term goal, at least from a behavioral health perspective, is, I'm excited about this, because it's integrating behavioral health and substance use disorder services. As you've heard me say a million times, you know, 80% of the folks we serve are what we call "co-occurring." They have a substance use disorder and a mental illness. And our mental health programs are bound to HIPAA standards. Our substance use disorder services programs are, they have to adhere to CFR 42, California Federal Regulation 42, which is a higher standard than HIPAA. So when I have a mental health clinician and a substance abuse counselor working with one client, we have to get a release of information in order to share that data, even though it's under, it's under my department's purview. So this is going to be huge. It's going to make our work much easier, even though the state thinks they're going to have this integration complete by 2027. I'm very hopeful, but it's really going to help us better serve the folks that we serve. So I have to say, this has been a lot of information, and I, and I have, I'll leave these handouts. I gave you, I printed off a little bit more information about CAL-AME, because, and it outlines all the initiatives that I just discussed. I also have staff standing by if there are any questions, because I don't know if I will be able to adequately answer them, because a lot of this is still in the planning stages. But I wanted you to know that this is, this is what's coming, what's coming to the Behavioral Health Services Department. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I thank you for allowing me to share this. And I do want to say, before I conclude, even though I just said I concluded it, that I will, I will be keeping your board apprised of our progress in this. And yeah, there will be more to come. So thank you.
Todd, thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you, Scott, for having part of the presentation as well. Supervisor Sabate, it looks like you have your, you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, this is definitely a hot topic in CSAC. Huge change for, everybody is trying to figure out how to better work collaboratively, and also meet expectations of what it is that we're trying to get accomplished and get done. I just wanted to say that I have been invited to meet with the work group that is meeting right now, I believe, Behavioral Health, the Sheriff, Health Services, Social Services. I think those are the main-
And probation.
And probation are the main contributors to that. Been to one meeting, I don't know if I've missed anything else, I don't think there's been another meeting since then, but I know it's tough, because the state of California has not finalized their guidelines, and so how do you prepare for something, and we know that this happens, ideas come out, but the specifics of the regulations take quite a while to get finalized, and usually it's at the last second. So how do we best prepare for that? I love the outcomes that we need to look at for this, because I think it's been difficult. I think that a lot of times, we are mandated to provide a service, but there's not any expectation of any specific outcomes, and so we're busy meeting the mandate, but sometimes the actual outcomes part, which is the important part for our community, to see the changes and the effect and the impact of those services, I think this is now a lot more focused on ensuring that we bring some outcomes to the services that we provide. There's not much of a question, other than a sarcastic one, how many millions of dollars are they providing us in order to put this together and meet their new mandates? And I believe the answer at this moment is nothing. They're trying to work within the boundaries that they're already providing the funding for. There may be some other funds that come out later, but right now, they're really asking a lot for changing without much behind it for, to help us out with those changes.
Well, as I, I think I mentioned earlier, there is $1.85 billion, it's over the course of five years. I mean, that's not what Lake County is going to receive, but what all the counties are going to receive in order to support this, which doesn't necessarily go specifically to a county agency, it's all agencies and organizations that will support these initiatives. So there is money.
But to me, it's the long-term sustainability of providing that, is we're going to need some funds to provide that. Right now, those funds are meant for the transition-
Absolutely.
But the long-term is always the big question mark of, how do we continue this? I think it's a good conversation, but I think a lot of counties are very nervous about what's the bottom line going to look like, once this is all implemented by mid to late 2023, because nobody knows at this moment in time.
Yes, we're all concerned.
Is there any other comments? Anybody from the public that has a? Joan, if you'd like to come up and speak?
Joan Moss. I am an enabler. I try to help people, and I really support what Todd is trying to do, and what the sheriff is trying to do. There's a woman and her family in Clear Lake, they don't even have phones. They owe $700 for electricity. Their tribal electricity has been charged, even though they don't live at a limb, they're disenfranchised. I didn't get the correct phone number for the tribal chairman, from, Thomas had a phone number that wasn't correct, and you can't help them unless you go over there. And some of us don't have the gas to get over there. So there's a very great need to do what this is, and I know Todd talked to me, always working with the sheriff, and I think it's something that's really needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Are there any other comments from the public on this item? All right, bring it back to the board, Supervisor Sabate.
I do have a question, while the sheriff is in the room with us. I know that some of CAL-AME potentially changes how medical services works in the jail. Wondering if you could provide some detail, or if that's still kind of a gray area, that we're not 100% sure.
Sure. As you mentioned earlier, we're still working on trying to get the finalized guidelines from the state, but we do know it's going to have an impact for the sheriff's department operations. The impact is, to us, is to make sure that we ensure the accessibility for service providers in there, service providers being either for behavioral health or medical services. I'm sure that'll be a topic of, in the conversation, in the request proposal that's coming out for health services provisions in the jail. The other thing that we, our responsibility is to make sure that there's access for the eligibility and enrollment people through social services. So we have policies in place, we've actually had some policies in place for quite some time, as far as getting such service providers in the county. We plan to incorporate those existing policies and make any changes that are needed to account for any differences that CAL-AME has for us. The idea is to get people, and probably without getting into too much of the weeds, the state of California has applied for a waiver from the federal government. Currently, if you're incarcerated for a period of time, and you're enrolled in Medical, your benefits are suspended. If you're incarcerated for over a year, your benefits, I believe, are terminated. I might be speaking out of school here, and somebody from Social Services would probably be able to provide a little bit more detail and clarity and precision, but that's my understanding of how it works. So now we have people that, when they're released from jail, they walk out into the, out in the wild, and have no safety net. What CAL-AME strives to do is make sure that 90 days prior to their release, they're enrolled, or if they're eligible, they're enrolled in Medical, and services can start up to 90 days before their release, and have that warm handoff that was mentioned in Director Metcalfe's presentation. So we're ready to do what we need to do, to make sure that access is provided to the facility, and get people help they need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? I just have one last one, I just, does this fit in anything with Care Corps, or is that something totally separate? Is it something that's going to plug in eventually? I know that that's still-
I'm working on a presentation on that as we speak, so I will get that to you, hopefully, before the end of July.
But are they hinged on each other, or are they separate?
Kinda, sorta, not.
So it makes it even more-
It's still one of those, it's one of those things that are still, it's still evolving.
To help complicate.
But I do want to bring this to your board, because you need to be aware of it, but I've been waiting, because there's a lot of controversy around it right now.
It's not been finalized.
Yeah. But I'll, I'll be back.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, and can I lead, can, can I-
Oh, yes.
Oh, thank you.
Please.
Yes. Yeah, when you can't sleep tonight, read that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our 6.7, our 10:15, Lake County Department of Health Services Monthly Update. And with that, Director Jonathan Portney, yep, he's right there. So I will go ahead and give the floor to you.
Good morning, supervisors. Good to be with you. Today, I was hoping to touch on a different aspect of our Health Services Department in a glow, in a grow, but I also just want to emphasize the importance of checking in and stating that, you know, COVID is still here, and we are seeing an increase in test positivity rates in our county, and also highlight that monkeypox is still a lingering and growing concern in the health industry. So more to report on those, but today, I want to create a special place for a special partnership person, and I have Larry Karstedt here today with our North Coast EMS provider. And over the past seven months since I've been here, we've had many trials and tribulations when it comes to access to care, service, care, service delivery, and I just want to express appreciation to Larry, and I wanted to invite him to this space to share how far we've come in these six months in navigating a system with limited resources. So without further ado, for the supervisors, I invited Larry here to provide a brief update, and in the future, in a few months, his team is putting together a more comprehensive update, but I just wanted to create space to check in with a familiar face and name. And welcome, Larry, to the Board of Supervisors in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good morning, everybody. Pleasure to be here. The last presentation was very important. Just as a side note, North Coast EMS has been very progressive for the last six years, maybe seven years, in trying to marry EMS and behavioral health to help offload patients at emergency departments, which increasingly face too many behavioral health patients at the same time without medical issues. So we're pleased that there is state funding. I understand, I think there's a total of $4 billion allocated within the state toward mental health issues over the next four or five years, so that's very exciting. And it's the first time in my very long career that this has happened, so we look forward to continue to work with our behavioral health colleagues as well. So I'm Larry Karstedt, Executive Director, North Coast EMS. As Jonathan just alluded to, we've been working with our partners in Lake County, Jonathan, Dr. McLaughlin, others, for several months to identify opportunities to enhance our services in Lake County, through review roles and responsibilities to target common objectives. Our overall objective is to plan, coordinate, and evaluate the EMS system in three counties, Delmar, Humboldt, and of course, Lake County. And we look forward to continuing to do that. We have a small but very effective team. In our capacity, we carry out statutes, regulations, we prepare annual EMS plan updates, write policies and protocols, medical for EMTs and paramedics to follow. Designate paramedic-based hospitals, both facilities in Lake are designated. One of those hospitals, Center Lakeside, is also a designated trauma center through North Coast EMS, and both facilities are somewhat uniquely designated by us as emergency departments approved for pediatrics, which means we've evaluated them, I think, within the last year and a half, conducted a site survey to ensure they're pediatric-ready, they have the right equipment, training, and so on in each emergency department. We're one of the longest, if not the longest-serving EMS agencies in the state of California. We have an- We have an excellent team. Dr. Matthew Karp is our medical director. He actually is an ED physician at Center Lakeside Hospital as well as in Santa Rosa. Our associate director's been with us 24 years, Wendy Chapman. Casey Heard, our paramedic, regional EMS disaster coordinator, is one of the longest-serving paramedics in the North Coast region, although she's retired from active paramedicine. And I am the longest-serving EMS director in California. I've actually served on behalf of Lake County for, I think, 34 years altogether now. Jonathan asked me to highlight a few recent successes. We recently submitted five EMS annual plan updates. That includes the overarching regional plan, the trauma plan, the semi-cardiac plan, the quality improvement plan, and the EMS for children plan. Each of these are fairly comprehensive. They had gone out for public review, we incorporated input, and those are at the State EMS Authority for approval at this point. We recently, one of the CTs at one of the facilities in Lake County went down a few weeks back and we assisted with clarification of patient destination issues surrounding the loss of that very important piece of equipment. I think that worked fairly well. You may be aware there's a drug shortage issue globally, has to do with the war in Ukraine and other factors. And we're working, as we do, with all of our partners within three counties, Lake County as well, to look at alternatives to fentanyl and other controlled substances and to provide guidance to our ALS providers in Lake County to ensure that they continue to be stocked or find alternatives to those potential shortages. And I mentioned the behavioral health linkage. We've been fairly, as I said, progressive in that regard. I should mention our fiscal picture. We have an annual budget roughly of $700,000 a year. Most of that is, about 40% comes from the State EMS Authority. We have a MADDY fund that the Board Supervisors adopted in each of the three counties at our request. We get a portion of that. That fund in Humboldt has been very large. I think about, they contribute about 40% total. Lake County's total contribution is around $35,000 annually. We're really excited, we're on the verge for the first time in well over 20 years we could receive, it's in the governor's budget at this point, another almost more than doubling of our state general fund allocation. And it will really help us increase services, add staff. Jonathan and I have talked about at least housing, staff maybe rotationally or someone that actually resides within Lake County if we can add staff, which we wanted to do for a long time. So if the governor signs the budget as is, that will be an annual increase of, I think, $255,000 to this office. That is huge. With resumption of in-person meetings, we look forward to being more present again. Obviously, there's been a pandemic and we haven't been traveling, but certainly if we receive this augmentation or other new revenue, we certainly would like to have a presence in Lake County either consistently or more often in the future. And if we get this money, we certainly should see an increase in our services, so we're excited about that. We do look forward, as Jonathan mentioned, to coming back to the board in a month or month and a half, whatever is appropriate, to do a more comprehensive presentation, get into more detail about what we do, what some of the issues, common issues that we have that we're working on with our partners. And I think that's about it and happy solstice to everybody.
You are.
Be happy to entertain any questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much for that presentation and I'm looking forward to a deeper conversation in the future. I know that one of the things that you and I have been working on, Larry, as well as with health services and the fire districts, is discussing IFTs, the interfacility transfers. And I just, I don't know that we have a permanent fix, but it definitely feels like we've alleviated some of the pains that we were dealing with at least six months to a year ago, where it was just taking too long to find an ambulance to be able to provide the service to another healthcare facility with higher level of care. So I appreciate the work that has been done, what's been approved, because I can, I can see it and I can feel it in those that are working in the, in the middle of all that, that it's less of a frustration to make sure that we care for our patients. So I appreciate the work that's been done.
Yeah, this has been a group effort. It's a very, very long problem in Lake County and most rural areas in the state and technically in the country, I think. There just aren't enough specialty services within small counties like Lake County. They have a lot of people that need to be transferred out of the area to higher, higher level facilities. There has, has been some good progress. I'm excited. I've seen a lot of folks come together and if we continue to work together to ensure that there are more available ambulances for those interfacility transfers, I think that's part of the solution. And we certainly look forward to working with all of you to, you know, assist with that issue.
And just to add, the presence in Lake County, I think, will make a huge difference. It's, it's not impossible to do great work when you're working from afar, but when you see what's happening and you can experience what's happening in a specific community, it's easier to be impassioned to make that change that's needed. And so I'm looking forward to that as well.
We are too. Thank you.
All right, so I'll go ahead and open it up for the public if there's any questions or concerns on 6.7. All right, bring it back to the board. Is there any other, Vice Chair Scott, or no, I seen you writing something. Okay. All right. Anything else you'd like to add, Director Portney?
That concludes our time today. Thank you, Supervisors. Thank you, Larry. Thank you, team, for joining us today and hearing us. Appreciate you.
My pleasure. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our 10:40.
Can we, um, can we look at B for A?
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, I got the, I got a message saying something along that, so I'll read it real quick and then we'll go to that first. So we got 6.8, 10:45 a.m., consideration of requests to waive fees to, for the appeal of the Planning Commission decision for major use permit, UP 19-19, Mombacho Mountain Organics LLC, Dan Westfall and Katie McQuire located at 9205 Mombacho Road, Kelseyville, California, 9261 Wildcat Road, Kelseyville, California, on May 26, 2022, due to a hardship. And B, consideration of policy regarding the consideration of requests for reduction of waiver of certain land use appeal filing fees. And with that, we'll take a B first. And let's see, Susan, would you like to, or I'm sorry, Anita, I'm looking at B. Sorry, I was looking at the wrong one.
That's all right. What your board has before you in terms of this policy is simply a draft, it's a rough draft to give you an example of the type of fee policy waiver or fee reduction policy that other entities use. When this request, there's a specific request that your board will take up after this item. I was surprised to see that there was no filing fee waiver provision in these zoning ordinance and that stopped this from being dealt with immediately had there been one. Again, this draft just simply applies standards and conditions in the same way that if someone claims undue hardship in a superior court, there's an application, there's information that has to be completed. That explains why the individual qualifies. There are standards that are normally employed here. The, there are three different options to be able to make that finding. Whether your board uses any or all of those is completely up to you. I would also say that I routed this so that the Community Development Department would make recommendations to the CAO. And again, this is a draft, so I hope neither shoots me because I did not, with time constraints, again, it's just a draft, I did not discuss this with them, though the department from which the appeal would come and the CAO are, are common methods of getting the recommendations out and making decisions. But again, that's all up to your board. The only thing I would recommend is that you have some consistent standards because that's where equity and fairness lies, to ensure that every request is, is approached in exactly the same way.
All right, any comments? Susan?
Oh.
Yeah.
I was just gonna wait to hear if the board had any comments before I speak. Nope?
Go ahead and speak, yeah.
So you have in front of you the application, the appeal that was submitted by Joan Moss. We, we haven't really conferred too much on this because it was such a short turnaround. My recommendation to the board, if you see fit, is to allow myself and Director Darby to meet and confer and speak to this a little bit more, with your comments to incorporate into a policy if you so choose to adopt a waiver, waiver to your fees. That's all I had.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I know that there's a difference in how you go about appeals when it's a minor use or a major use. I know that there's a lot of time that goes into a major use in the public notification. I'm just wondering legally, so my question is for Ms. Grant, would it be possible if the fee is waived to go through the same similar process as the minor use, which is kind of like a meeting with staff and figuring out if, because sometimes it's misunderstandings, which in my opinion, that's what I think we're looking at in here. Sometimes it's misunderstandings and so if we're waiving a fee and we're asking for staff to put in, I don't know, 20 hours, 40 hours, whatever it is, plus whatever expenses it requires to be able to notify and post all these things, just wondering if there's a, if legally we can use a route that is available but is not part of the major use, it's, it's more of the route that we would use for the minor use? I think the answer is no, but I thought I would ask.
If I understand you correctly, that would likely be inadvisable just because the scale adjusts and what, what is fair for everyone, I would suggest, is to have standards. Circumstances will be different for each applicant, but the standards against which the determination is made should be relatively the same. As I said, I provided three different options for this prove-up. That's, that's what I saw in a number of jurisdictions. Again, for the ones that allow waivers or fee reductions for appeals, many do not. Many allow for fee waivers of many other things but don't allow for this. Others require the payment of fees be made and then the waiver issue be taken up after the fact. Here with regard to this individual appeal, we, we conferred and determined that it was fair to allow the appeal just to preserve the timeliness of the appeal while this issue came to your board, because again, there is no, no existing written standard, so.
So the answer was not advisable, which is what I thought, but I thought I'd ask just to see. But if we're going to do this, I would say that we need a limitation of distance from the project, because right now it could be somebody all the way across the other side of Lake County that would be submitting it since there's no distance criteria. And I know that, for example, the summary abatements that we do, which utilizes tax dollars to be able to provide that service, is approved by the district supervisor to say, yes, this is something that requires a summary abatement, let's go ahead and move forward on it, just as an option that maybe that district supervisor would be in favor of moving forward and supporting that the appeal does move forward and receive the waiver.
You mean doing this similar to a summary abatement?
No, just those two criterias, because if you're going to waive the cost of the appeal cost, that if it's a, whatever district it's in, that that supervisor supports, that that waiving of the fees moves forward, and also that it's limited in distance from where that project is.
All right, Supervisor Pisca?
Yeah, so I, I think the policy is important. This is an equity issue, especially in a county like ours. But it also leaves open the possibility for abuse and so I don't know if a partial fee is, is the better thing to do, but I, but there does need to be some way to vet. And it sounds like there's a, there's going to be a conversation that happens and so that needs to be embedded in the policy too. And then maybe the supervisor has the final sign-off after it's been vetted, I don't know, but some process needs to be in place.
Ms. Grant?
The only thing I would suggest when it comes to fee waivers, it's, it's an uncomfortable position for an individual board member to be in, to have the final say.
I was just gonna say.
On a waiver, the whole point of the policy, I think, would be to, to have very objective, concrete standards that are applied across the board. Now, that's, there's nothing wrong with getting the supervisor's opinion certainly, but you might want to be careful how you couch that. This policy was drafted for land use decisions, which contemplates, you know, appeals to the Planning Commission or appeals to the board, but perhaps that's not as clear as it could be. Certainly, again, it's, it's simply a draft and talking points to see how your board wants to proceed and what standards you wish to employ. And certainly you can make decisions today with regard to an individual request. I would, I would suggest if you do so, it be something that you want to see incorporated and memorialized into a policy. Or if you have directions with regard to, to a policy, do you want to consider, for example, a reduction of fees as opposed to a waiver? What standards, are the standards here things that you agree with or would you prefer just one clean line? The idea of someone filing an appeal in proximity to the project, I'm assuming that's because they could be materially affected thereby, you can include those kind of standards. But the point is, again, the, the issue is really access to the appeal process and access can be adjusted according to those who would face an undue financial hardship. But again, there, there should be a test to determine that, as is used by the courts and other jurisdictions in determining whether that hardship exists, because as Supervisor Pisca said, that's the only way you avoid just having the exceptions overrun the rule, which means that the taxpayers are at a disadvantage because those fees aren't charged. I would also say, I don't know if your board received these, I had a communication from Mr. Westfall, I think he's on the thing today, and he had, he had also, he was against the waiver. I can make copies and make sure they're here. There's also one from an Aaron McCarrick. You got that one? Okay. I just wanted to make sure, since they came to me and I didn't see anyone else's name on them this morning, I didn't want to withhold them.
Thank you for that. Vice Chair Scott?
So my question will go to County Council on this. So how does this not fall under gift of public funds when we're charging this fee to cover staff time?
Well, again, the only reason it does not fall under gift of public funds is because you're making factual findings in terms of hardship. And a hardship waiver or reduction can be done whenever your board feels that it's necessary because, again, it's access to the appellate process, so. And again, a number, as I said, several jurisdictions, when I was going through to see what other places we're doing, have waivers for everything but land use appeals. Historically, this county has not had a waiver, that's why there's nothing in the policy. My recommendation here with regard to this draft is only that if you wish to consider it, that you consider it according to very well-defined terms, because a failure to prove up undue hardship could easily be construed as a gift of public funds.
I guess my concern too is that if we move forward and pass this, we're going to have everything appealed, because they're going to find somebody that qualifies under our standards and we're not going to be able to get anything moving forward. So I'm really concerned about moving forward with this.
I, I share those concerns.
Supervisor, Ms. Grant?
Oh, I was just gonna say, and certainly with regard to this. Oh, I was just gonna say, certainly with regard to this policy, there's no expectation that you'd move forward with this. My only concern was that you had some standards in front of you, should you wish to do so.
Supervisor Sabatier and then Supervisor Simon.
Simon.
Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, you know, I have the same concerns. You know, always something new coming to us all the time, but I have the same concern at this point of moving forward with a policy for the fee reduction regarding the request of reduction in waiver fees, so yeah, at this time, I'm not prepared to move forward with it.
My concern with the statement that was made earlier about specific people having a, what's the word, not just the hardship, but the appeal and then other folks finding people that qualify, it's the immediate thing I thought of because I worked in fraud for social services before. And so at times, there's instances where people are, you know, accosted to come and make those types of things in order to, you know, appeal or whatever the case may be and then are still somehow otherwise compensated. And so, I mean, I'm not against doing a waiver because I do feel there are some instances where it's needed. I just would like to see measures in place to ensure that that's not happening, but it's a very slippery slope because how do you determine that? You're just taking basically people's words for it and then you're also churning on too much extra work to find out if that's even happening. But again, I'd like to discuss further, so I'm fine with, like you said, maybe coming back with more, but yeah. Supervisor Sabatier?
I think number one, our appeal process doesn't ask for much. I mean, even the appeal that we received, it's like a one-sentence and I think we need to, what specific categories is the problem with what was approved that you're appealing rather than just a very wide-open, I don't like it and I'm worried about such and such? Like, I think it needs to be a little bit more specific of what it is that you are appealing and why you're appealing. I think right now, it's just not very specific. I think it's difficult to make it specific because there's so many different types of things that can be appealed, but if we're talking about planning commission appeals, I think that's a whole lot easier than just appeals in general. I think that, I want to put this as kindly as possible, we shouldn't be afraid of poor people appealing versus people with the means to be able to appeal. I think we just need to build the criteria to make sure that it's not abused and that's it. Because anyone with $1,200 can abuse the system any day that they want because they don't like what we're doing and right now, you can literally live 200 miles away from that in the complete opposite, polar opposite corner of Lake County and be able to file an appeal. There's no restrictions. So I just, that I think is not something we should be weary of. I think more so, we need to make sure that we have criteria so that we're not coming here for an appeal based on no reason other than just, I don't like it. It has to be some sort of proof of breach of the process to get the approval obtained at the planning commission or something of the kind so that we can limit it as much as possible. Not limited, but we can restrict it to what it is that the planning commission is focused on approving in the first place. So I think the criterias are gonna be important to be able to discuss and bring back what those restrictions are, but I think that a waiver is allowing to give people a voice who may not be able to get that voice heard. And so I don't, I like the fact that it restricts it to one appeal per year already, that's a great restriction, I like that. That way, it's not going to be abused by a specific person or a specific individual. And I think if we do restrict it to being more adjacent to the property where you have the ability to be impacted by these things. But I would say that we do need to have some sort of waiver, maybe it's not the entirety of it and right now, as it's written, it's not because I believe the waiver that we're looking at today was 1149 if I remember correctly and inside the policy says $1,000, so even then, right there, it doesn't cover the whole thing. And I don't think it should have to cover the whole thing, but some sort of aid to allow those who can't to have that ability, I think, is an okay thing to do.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, I appreciated the conversation on a reduction of fees, not a waiver. You know, I really think we should stay away from the waiver opportunity and be able to change the policy to say, you know, with the appeal, if you meet these financial criteria, you could put in for a reduction of fees and I would say 50%. You know, that would be, so, agree with the conversation about some people just need that opportunity, but I think it should be in the reduction form, not in a waiver policy part of, you know, our existing policy saying, if you meet these financial requirements, when you bring it back, you know, you have an opportunity to ask for a reduction of the fees, so. But that does put a lot of work and put the work on the individual. You need to provide, your tax agency, you need to provide this, this, and this, so our folks aren't adding that extra work. I mean, they're already overtaxed and, you know, working hard to get the thing through and just giving that opportunity. So that's my thoughts, I just, I think we stay away from the waiver and go for a reduction of fees if you meet these financial requirements and we can, you know, get there where, you know, giving that opportunity.
Yeah, I was also thinking the 50% reduction because, you know, it is still, it can be difficult for some people to come up with those funds, but that's the time that you coordinate with your neighbor or you find other people that feel the same way. But, you know, the whole reason we have the fees is to make sure that, you know, people have some skin in the game and that they're not just arbitrarily creating a lot of work for staff. But with the fee waiver process, it seems like the claim, the appeal, needs to be substantiated also. So I don't know what that process looks like, if that's a meeting with that department, can we not do that?
Well, you can put certain general criteria around the appeal, but you have to be careful that you're not controlling the content of the appeal itself. Because even if at first glance, someone might say, well, that doesn't look like a very good issue on appeal if it's within the parameters of what can be appealed. And it may be better for your board to consider defining that in terms of, these are the, this is the, for any land use matter, the appeal, for example, of a planning commission decision, has to be based upon the decision actually made of the planning commission in the course of its hearing or something to that effect. But to be terribly specific, would be looking at these appeals as a content-based type restriction. And while your board can certainly have the matter before you quasi-judicially and make those determinations, I don't know that they can be stopped before they get to you.
And this is why I offered that the district supervisor have some sort of say in it and I think that saying yes to doing a summary abatement is expending tax dollars, saying yes to a fee reduction or a waiver is also kind of the same thing in the long run, so I'm not sure where it puts a supervisor in a stranger scenario than making a final decision. But just to have, because we're here to represent the community that put us here in the first place and I think understanding how projects will impact and how projects will not impact communities is a voice that I think we all listen to very loud and clear when we're here anyways in the appeal process and it helps to potentially limit or support what goes on, so just-
I don't really see it as similar and the reason I say that is because when somebody is doing a summary abatement, it's on somebody that's obviously committing issues with, you know, dumping or, you know, any of those type of things. In this situation, it's basically one person interpreting an ordinance or any type of violation or something along with sequel that they don't agree with and vice versa. And then you have people that own the property that are renting to people or whatever the case may be. And so you have both of those entities with a summary abatement or an abatement, that person that's committing the abatement can basically say, oh, it's not me or whatever, but they're responsible for it. So you have to, so you know, like, okay, yeah, you don't want us to do a summary abatement or abatement, but at the same time, you're responsible for this property. In the other situation, you have somebody that's trying to either ensure a project moves forward and maybe is, has a business partner or whatever the case may be, so they're going to be, you know, two different entities basically pawing at that supervisor, which, I mean, it's part of our job, yes, but at the same time, I feel I agree with Ms. Grant that it puts us in a very precarious situation. So I, I mean, as much as I like that, I think there's gotta be another mechanism or something of that nature to grant what you're talking about, if that makes sense. Ms. Grant?
Yes, I would just say that again, when your board hears a land use appeal, you're sitting quasi-judicially, so to make a decision about the efficacy of an appeal prior to the appeal coming before you as a body, in a summary abatement, your, one board member is weighing in on action that can be taken in an emergency circumstance. Summary abatement only occurs when there's imminent harm to the environment and surrounding areas, so it's a much, it's a much rarer occurrence. Plus, again, you're also applying it to a set of very objective criterias as to whether a summary abatement is applicable. It's not really the same kind of value judgment as determining whether an appeal has merit because that's part of your quasi-judicial process and that's another part of the distinction. Though again, I think there are still ways to get there, it just, it surrounds more in terms of the parameters of the appeal itself. I think that's probably a stronger way to get there. But again, how your board wishes to do it is certainly up to you.
Supervisor Pisca? Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Scott.
So looking at the value base, would we be able to put something in the writings that state you have to have signatures from so many neighbors to be able to move forward with this? I'm not in favor of a fee waiver or a fee reduction, but if we are gonna move forward with that, I really think we need to make sure our parameters are set. There was something else I was going to say, but, but I would like, would we be able to do that? Have signatures of neighbors so you have at least other people on board saying that, yes, they agree with this or would that not be something we'd be able to do?
The problem is that the concerns may just, and they may be completely legitimate concerns, but only one person has them. The geography, locations, et cetera, there may be only one person affected and, again, it's, in this case, the criteria would be based on undue financial hardship, undue financial hardship, which is more than I don't want to pay this amount of money to file an appeal. I'm sure that would be everyone. This is an undue financial hardship and so your policy criteria really need to simply, for purposes of this. And certainly, in any case, when your board's sitting quasi-judicially, all the things you're talking about can come into play and they're all valid. It's just, if you're looking at qualifying for a fee reduction based on undue hardship, then you need to stick as much as possible to the criteria that reflect whether that exists or not because that's objective and it's concrete and it's a legitimate precursor to action that you'll take later in a quasi-judicial capacity.
And then I did remember my other point. Because these fees are covering department heads' work that they have to do, I think we also have to put in place, how are we going to supplement that income that they're losing in this so that they're not out because we keep accepting these waivers or fee reductions?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just to throw something else in the conversation, in a way, there already exists this, it's just not a fee waiver because we bring stuff to the board, not because we thought of it yesterday or over the course of the year, but because people bring stuff to us and we start investigating and if we feel we need to bring stuff to the board to create an ordinance or fix a problem, we do that, there is the ability for a board supervisor to appeal a decision made at the planning commission. And if we do that, I don't know what the cost is, but it says right here on section 21-58.30, Board of Supervisors Appeals, Decisions of Planning Commission May Be Appealed As Follows, and it says persons eligible, the Board of Supervisors. So if the board supervisor does that, I don't think that's at a cost that we have to pay, I think that's at a cost of the taxpayers if we choose to do so. So in a way, communicating with your board supervisor currently and if you persuade them to go ahead and appeal it and bring it to the board, it already exists in that term. I just want to at least put it out there that there is somewhat of an avenue that already exists where a individual themselves does not have to pay if a board supervisor feels that this is something that they want to bring. Just wanted to make sure we were aware that that was an availability for a pathway.
How many times has that happened?
Possibly never. I don't know. It was created in 1988, it says here, by ordinance.
And it would be your board as a collective, obviously, so.
Yeah, I feel that another thing to add is, I think regardless of the reduction or of the waiver, I feel like they will come more often than regular appeals. I feel like once we do this, there will be no regular appeals anymore because it'll be, if I want to appeal something, it'll be me to find somebody that can make the appeal. It doesn't just have to be the same person, it could be another person. Let's say that one person expended their appeal, now I can find another person to pay less and if I'm gathering signatures and people that don't like it, we have that momentum going. Second, I think when, what you mentioned at the same time, I lost my thought, sorry. But I feel that that's going to be the, one of the things that'll take place. Oh, that's what it was, when you mentioned supplemental costs for paying for the time spent on the project or whatever the case may be, it's, I guess that would put it upon us to figure out where some of the funding will come from, rather it be like a cannabis project. So now, we're gonna have to figure out a way to budgetize or whatever the case may be, so the funding that's not gonna be used to cover that time. And when you really think about it, a lot of, all of our departments are already working on, you know, currently working, like, just an example, 10 projects when they have 100. And so when an appeal takes place like this, there are some people that are savvy to that and understand that by burdening the county more, it gets them faster to what they want rather than other projects being done as well. So there's initiatives to ensure that, you know, our processes are slowed down and I think this kind of gives advantage to that, so it's important that we look through the policy. And I'm not against any of the ideas, I think we should, we need more time to craft this, if that makes sense. Supervisor Pisca?
Well, a lot of our appeals come to us as collaborations with neighbors where they're sharing the fees. And when you split the fee by three or four or five people, it's not insurmountable and that gives more buy-in to the need for the appeal. I don't know where I am with this right now because it's very difficult. We, you know, we have, we have a lot of disadvantaged people in our community and I don't want them to lose their voice. But I do think that, I don't agree with a fee reduction or a fee elimination at all. I'm not sure where I am with the reduction. But I think if there is a big enough issue, you can reach out to your other neighbors and if all of your neighbors agree, then you can work on it together. But tightening up the appeal criteria, I think, is critical, either way we go.
I remembered my, the disadvantaged community was the main thing. Like you said, there's 30,000, just thinking of other numbers that were given, those 30,000 out of 65,000 are eligible for Medi-Cal and whatnot. And then we are in a county that has a lot of hardships as it is when you think about it, whether it be drought, fire, or any other emergency declarations that we have. And so that is also subjective to whoever's appealing. I mean, if I'm a person that is affected by the drought and I'm a farmer or something of that nature, I would feel like I would deserve some sort of hardship for the appeal as well, you know, and if we're making these types of changes to our ordinances or whatever the case may be policies, I feel that that's going to continue because I've heard them before when they've come, is we feel that there should be a waiver or whatever the case may be. So I just wanted to add that, just to state it because I've heard it been talked about, so. Like, again, I think working on this a little further would help. Oh, Moke, I'm sorry, I didn't see your pen.
Yeah, you know, good discussion today, obviously, but, you know, the more we talk about it is the waiver or the reduction of the fees, you know, I just have a- about it, is the waiver or the reduction of the fees, you know, I just have a real concern that it's, it's going to move some, we've all been approached of, I, I don't want to pay these fees at community, I don't, you know, whether it's road impact fees, or, you know, all of these things. Um, and the more conversation we have about it today. Appreciate the, uh, the reading of the ordinance from 1988, have the ability as a Board of Supervisor, we feel like, hey, planning commission didn't do something right, and we can bring it here and have that discussion. I think it, it's, it's already there. But if a board member's not prepared to do that, you know, then we move forward. So, yeah, you know, obviously, I do not agree with the waiver, and even the reduction. I just think we'd be moving in the wrong, the wrong direction at this point. So, you know, after the discussion today, I just want to change my position. I'm, I'm not prepared to move forward with either. And I don't think anything that comes back would change my mind at this point.
I think too, um, just to clarify, uh, what was read, can you read that again, Supervisor Spady?
I just got rid of it.
Sorry. And the reason why is because following this meeting, I guarantee, each one of us, we're going to get that request from here forward. So what are the limitations on it? What does that look like? You know, um, you know, and it hasn't happened before.
I, I would have to look at the actual ordinance itself.
Ms. Grant has it, I think she's.
Yeah, I do. Um, if you're talking about, uh, decisions of the planning commission may be appealed as follows, 58.31 of the zoning ordinance. It says persons eligible, a person having an interest in the property that is subject of the decision being appealed, and interested person not satisfied with the decision of the review authority, or three, the Board of Supervisors. So again, not an individual board member, but it would have to be a majority vote of your board.
It would be a board member that approaches the board with requesting an appeal, uh, in order to move forward with that. But does the ordinance itself, ordinance number 1749 from July 7th, 1988, provide any more detail? Or is it just, that's it? It's as simple as that, that ordinance?
It, given the fact that it shows up several times throughout, I would imagine it's just delineating the circumstances. I haven't pulled the ordinance. Um, I apologize, I didn't anticipate a, a legislative review. But, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that. I just hadn't anticipated it. But, um, again, these are the decisions, and you'll see the persons eligible for appeal right now under number two, any interested person not satisfied with the decision of the review authority. So that's a relatively broad category. But, uh, the lack of satisfaction with the decision is essentially the basis of, of an appeal. It's up to your board sitting quasi judicially, once the appeal comes to you, to see if those are, um, just, if those dissatisfactions have any legal basis that would require a different decision. Again, because you sit quasi judicially in that capacity, you can't preform those notions.
And I think I bring up what I did is because I, lately, there have been a lot of projects that have taken place in my district that, um, either the town councils or a majority of them are not in agreement with. Um, and so I foresee them coming to me and saying, I heard what was read, I want you to bring this to the board to see if they'll take this appeal, um, because we feel needs to, and you represent us. And so I, I'm just noting that, so we talk about it now. So they hear it, and I hear it, and you know, when I come with four or five, you know, what, what's going to take place. So, yeah.
If your board's interested in me backtracking this ordinance, I'm happy to do so. I can provide next week, or the week after, or whenever your board wishes some further information as to, to what was contemplated in that ordinance in terms of an appeal by the board. I can also inform you of whether that's in present day, since 1988 was a while ago. Um, if in present day, this is a common occurrence in other jurisdictions, which doesn't have to guide you, but it gives you an idea if this is standard, or something that was uniquely suggested for, for your board. Shall I do that?
Yeah. For me, you've got enough to do. Um, if
It's not going to be that.
We know the ordinance number, we can take the time to read it ourselves. If we have some more information, uh, that, at least, that's myself. I know that there are so many things going on. I don't want to add one more thing on there that we could do, uh, with just finding that number, looking at the ordinance, if anyone else is interested in doing that. That's my thoughts on it for, um, for moving forward. So that's just me.
I, I agree, Moke.
And we can also see, um, how, how things change for us after this. If it does become a big issue, then we can bring it back.
That's good.
Yeah.
I don't know about everybody else, but they're constantly, uh, you know, that's part of the decisions we make as a board, whether to bring an item here to be discussed, or, you know, by the entire board, or, or not. Just because you're asked, doesn't mean you, you need to look at the merits and, and see where it's at. Not just, this is what I, I want, and you do it. You know, what you need to look at it, taking into consideration of everything, uh, that's compounded. So, uh, we get that every day. Probably got emails today on what needs to be done. So.
It's like tug of war.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
And so, uh, what does that process look like, uh, from like here, here forward? If something is brought to one of us supervisors, do we meet with Susan to determine that? Do we bring it here and, and go from, because again, I think you mentioned that you, if, if you bring it, it kind of, uh, you know, I'm just a little confused about that process.
Well, yeah, and it's not very well fleshed out. That's why, again, this is going to take me an hour. It's not going to be... I, I can, I can flesh this out for you, and, um, I appreciate very much your, your concern about my time. This will not be a significant expenditure of time.
I would appreciate it.
But it's, again, it's up to you. As far as the process, what I would say, if, if, if you don't want to do that, is you'd have to look to, to the language of the statute to see whether there is any procedure that was included in the ordinance. That's probably doubtful, um, because if there was a procedure to follow it, it likely would show up somewhere, either via resolution or in the body of the ordinance itself. And the ordinance, um, appears to have been, um, made part of the zoning ordinance, so I would assume it's covered everything. But that's, that's only an assumption. The, the process to, to bring it would be for, I would assume, one board member. A process, let me say, not the process, but a process to bring it to you would be a board member who believes that there are issues with the decision of the planning commission in regard to a particular decision. And that board member, um, would solicit the support of a majority of your board to actually do the appeal. The part that's very unclear is to whom. If your board is the appellant, then to whom is the appeal made?
Right.
Right.
And that's the part that is a, a legal issue.
Supervisor Spady?
And i- if there is, uh, board direction to continue looking at what this policy would look like, um, that my suggestion is just add on top of that. When it comes back to us, if we can just get a copy of that ordinance, that way it's public, uh, the public can review it. And I'm sure we can even get it earlier if we really wanted to take a look at it. Uh, but that way, there's no need to seek it out and give us an interpretation. We can have that discussion when the other part comes back, if that's the decision of the board to do so today.
And I would assume that the appeal would come to you, which you'd raise the issues, and then your board, sitting as the, the appellate, well, in this case, of course, it's de novo, so you would just take issue with the decision. And then, um, request that evidence be presented to you in the same de novo fashion as you hear appeals now, where you're not reviewing solely the decision of another body, you're, you're hearing the case again anew. So that's probably how that would, that would be contemplated to work.
In my mind, for some reason, I see it as when we ask for an extra item. Like, you just really stick to the basic concept of saying, do you want to see the appeal, but without discussing the appeal? Uh, and then afterwards, eventually it comes back. That's...
Yes.
Okay. That helps. All right. So is there any other conversation on this that we need to have? Uh, so we'll go, um, so I, I know that I see someone raising their hands. Should I open up that public input for that, or?
Are we only on part A, or part B?
We're on part B still. But do you want to speak to part B, or do you want to speak to the whole thing?
I want to speak the whole thing. I want three minutes, that's all. I want to have you when I recently do. And that way, your condescension will be clear.
All right.
It's good to have that.
All right. So come on up and speak your three minutes. Yeah.
I, just as a reminder, your board does have a, which is an action item, if you decide to take it up today.
Right.
Okay.
Could you give one to each person?
I can.
I really appreciate being able to speak and showing you this, because it might ease your consciences.
There's only one.
One to each person. You need more?
And so, Joan, so right now, we're speaking to the fact that if we're going to consider the item, um, and, and we're talking about, uh, the ordinance, or the policy regarding the consideration.
Exactly.
We're not talking about the full?
No.
The A yet.
We're not having the appeal, let's hope. With liberty and justice for all, I believe these words were meant for everybody, the rich and the poor. I filed an appeal, and that appeal involves water. You need to know, I consulted the sheriff of Lake County, who is the OES director and the director of the Declaration of Drought Conditions. He interviewed me over the phone, and the day before, he returned my call, I handed him a note. I have a drought-related emergency and documents related to the proposed increase the use of water by my neighbors that threatens my well, and I am being denied an appeal in front of the Board of Supervisors because of my low income. I cannot afford the filing fee of $1,000. The sheriff sent me to the Water Resources Engineer, and he already has my documents. These are documents that I've found since the last time the planning commission met, and I can prove that these things are true. But I want you to know that the sheriff did not ask me for $1,000 before he told me to go talk to the Water Resources Engineers. So I just want you to know that there's other people around who can help me. NCO granted me 2,000, 250,000, no, $250 because I was evacuated during the valley fire. I qualified for a low-income loan from NCO. I've been beating the bushes. I appreciate your concern. Poor people do exist, and they do have questions, and they do have intelligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
If you don't mind, I'd like to make a correction. In fact, I've got a couple of emails, some of them, I think, went to state members and potentially federal representatives as well. You have not been denied an appeal. That's what we're actually discussing today. Uh, I think that you were given a conditional approval of the appeal until the decision is made. And unfortunately, I've seen, and right here I have it in writing, that I have, I am being denied an appeal, and, and at this point, no decision has been made. And so that is incorrect. I just want to make sure and clarify that.
I understand. I understand. Thank you.
All right. So I have two people raising their hands online. Um, let's see, uh, we'll start with...
And just for clarification, right now, what we're talking about is whether or not we're going to do a policy. That's what we're talking about right now, correct?
We were on B, yeah.
Yes, we were on B first, yes.
All we're talking about is whether or not we're going to move forward with the policy for a waiver or a reduction.
Right.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
Yeah. No, thank you for that. That's what I reminded, uh, Joan as well. Um, so Craig Litwin, if you could unmute, you have three minutes. And again, we are talking about the policy and whether to move forward or not with that policy.
Thank you kindly, and good morning. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, so to the board, to the chair, to the staff, thank you for the time. My name's Craig Litwin. I am the CEO of 421 Group. We're a cannabis consultancy. Uh, we work throughout the state. I've served on a city council myself for eight years in Sebastopol, and I'm very familiar with, uh, many of these processes. And thank you for your attention today. Um, what I wanted to bring up is that it just, you know, I keep hearing the terms today of how, you know, undue hardship. And I think it's good to have compassion for folks with undue hardship. And the solution, I heard, for a Board of Supervisor to unilaterally bring it to the board, to ask for the rest of the board to consider an appeal at a future meeting, makes a lot of sense. I mean, that's an immediate waiver. You have that, that right now at your fingertips in your existing policy. What's confusing to me is how a quote-unquote "conditional appeal" could be granted to someone for a waiver process, when that, when that wasn't part of the rulemaking to get in the beginning. So, you know, the, the applicant in this, uh, you know, for the farm, who's under this quote-unquote "conditional appeal," is also going through undue hardship. And if the policy is that one has to file an appeal and pay a fee within the seven days under a prescribed ordinance, and that is not followed, it just doesn't make any sense to me that, um, one could consider a policy in, in, um, in, in reverse, uh, to then fulfill that, that appeal. One would, I would think, need to make the appeal process, and then for future appeals, that would, would be a path forward for, for someone to have that sort of waiver. So putting that aside, that I think that there's no real merit to the appeal because they didn't pay, just as a policy wonk, I think you're really opening a can of worms here. And, you know, hearing somebody say like, oh, all you have to do is find another friend to, to file an appeal for you. Um, you could have one person running around the county, filing appeals one after another, running up staff time, and just turning every meeting into a long, you know, into, into, you know, a planning commission approval into a Board of Supervisor hearing. And that, of course, is more staff time, and that's just going to increase the cost. And talk about undue hardship. If they're frivolous appeals based upon a simple way to get through that process, you're going to be causing a lot of undue hardship as an unintended consequence. So again, I really think it's good that you look how to help people who are hard off to appeal. Uh, you have that in front of you with the supervisor who could unilaterally bring it forward and ask the board for that permission. And again, thank you for your time today. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Dan Westfall?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to state that, you know, I disagree with everything that Craig just said. Uh, he pretty much took the words out of my mouth. Um, and the, the fact that there is a one-week window to pay for this, to file this, to do this, um, that's, I understand, that's part of the process. But if you guys now have to make rules because they weren't in effect at the time, now, what, you know, now you're making rules that didn't exist. So her window of opportunity has literally disappeared, and we need to move forward, we must move forward. So the decision is very simple. At the time, there was no decision, there was no policy or exact policy. If you got to take time and rewrite these rules and do it in a completely different session, I understand. But, um, I agree with everything Craig just said, and a can of worms and everything else. But I'd just like to leave it at that, that we need to move forward. The hardship is with the farmers that are suffering, that can't get in the ground. Um, we are suffering as farmers, the longer we wait. And it's not going to be a good thing if we don't get a good decision today. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone, uh, for public input on this, uh, now I'll bring it back to the board, and I'll just say that frivolous and, and hardships, again, are subjective to whoever is appealing, or whoever is stating that. Um, regardless of somebody's status, or whatever the case may be, they're going to always have their own perception of what that is. So, um, I closed public input, but I'll go ahead and give you a couple more, give you one last, this'll be the last one, and then we'll move forward from there.
Okay. Mi- Michael Wagner, uh, thank you again for letting me come up. Uh, it is nice to see all the people, uh, showing back up. Uh, Craig, it's nice to see you again, uh, in a totally different setting, apparently. Um, I, I think that it's important for you guys to take this into consideration, um, because there are people that don't have the funds to, uh, bring forward an appeal. I think that's very true. I think in the policy itself, if we were looking at the policy as far as if there was an issue with the planning commission itself, it would have to be based materially on the things that were reviewed by the planning commission. So if the process for people who need to have an appeal is based on there being some kind of factual, uh, misconduct, or lack of representation, or whatever it might be, you could make it really pointed about how you get to that appeal process, by making it focused on what the planning commission did or did not do. the Planning Commission did or did not do. If it's not materially flawed, then there is no appeal that can be made. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. With that, I'll close public input and just one last thing about that ordinance, the statement about that, is that the seven days that the, that the Board of Supervisor can bring it forward or is there, is it have a date?
All appeals are subject to. All appeals are subject to seven days, I believe. All appeals of land use decisions in that particular section are subject to seven days and with regard to this, an appeal to the supervisor, it's also seven days.
Okay, so, so that right there takes care of some that have already possibly expired that people will, you know, once we have that more lined out. But that, but that was the thing I assumed, I didn't see it upfront, but I thought maybe that that one was more of an open appealing timeframe where someone can come for something that happened a while back and bring it to the supervisor to appeal. But now that that states seven days, they'll have that same timeframe to do. Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll, I'll just update my perspective. I'm glad I threw this in and I'm glad that we got the comments that we, we did. I think we make decisions to support or not support things every single day and I think there's already an avenue for a way for somebody to request our support and whether we give it to them or not is going to be up to us. We make decisions every single day that mimic this and so to me, we already have an avenue. Why ask staff to spend time on crafting a policy and why, why ask to do more? I think it's already in existence, it's already there and now that we've had the conversation, people are aware. We may get some extra requests that we've never gotten before, but again, it's up to us to make our decisions of what we think is worthy of bringing to the board and not worthy to bring to the board.
So with that, are we moving forward with any of the discussion that we had about?
So then I just have a question on that. So if we have seven days to bring something to the board for an appeal, do we have to have something in writing to that department to be able to bring forward because we're actually appealing it to bring it to the board to see if we have enough supervisors to appeal it? So how would that actually work?
We just need to file a form like the public would have to do so. Therefore, we meet that timeline and then whenever it comes to the agenda is when it comes to the agenda. But I think that I, I will personally be reviewing ordinance number 1749 just to see if there's any extra details in there. But the way it's laid out currently in chapter or Article 58, it does provide timeliness, form, filing and fee. An appeal of a decision by the Planning Commission shall be filed with the clerk of the Board of Supervisors within seven calendar days. So it's no different, the process we would have to follow based on what I'm reading here. But again, I'm going to be reviewing that ordinance just to see if there's anything.
CEO Parker or Ms. Grant? I think I've seen you both turn your.
Yeah, we've. I, I'm assuming that there is a fee waiver for the Board of Supervisors to file within that seven days.
That is my assumption as well.
Or maybe it should come from our budget, you know? We need to have a budget line for that. So we're, we're, we are making sure that departments are, are covered.
Yep, I agree with that.
So if we move forward with B and not have an agreeance to move forward, would that just make A mute because she passed the seven days?
No, well, it can depend upon your board's decision. Because the ordinance was silent as to any type of fee waiver and it does exist in other places in the county ordinances, it came to you for consideration. Your board has considered these types of things before, but your decision, for example, if you decide to deny the request for a fee waiver or fee reduction, then the appeal dies because, again, the appeal was just preserved for this one question before your board.
So did she file this document? I'm just looking at it right now. Did she file it within the time period? And so basically, right, what, would there be a possible way that the district she lives in can bring it forward as an extra item and then we decided, well, see it and then approve or deny it here and go from there? Or is that what I, am I hearing it wrong? Because I'm, I'm hearing it like when we bring these forward, it would have to come as like a consideration of an extra item to hear it eventually or calendarize it. And so with regard to this, rather than kind of, you know, dealing with it today would give us the opportunity to say, would, do we want to hear this as an appeal, as an extra item from the Board of Supervisor or something like that? Or should we talk about that further?
Well, if, if you want to consider that as an extra, you, whether you can make the grounds for an extra would be up to your board, but that would be the avenue to be able to take. Otherwise, failing that, and even with appeal by the board and the seven-day timeframe, the seven days is, as, as one of the speakers pointed out, is, is also a protection for the developer, for the project applicant, so that projects aren't in limbo for a lengthy period of time. So again, depending upon what this ordinance may say to that or what your board may determine, that seven days moves very quickly for your board. So essentially, it would be an item that would have to come, the board of the Planning Commission made a decision on a Thursday, it would have to be in front of you by the following Tuesday.
Right. And, and that's what I'm saying is, is to consider it on that Tuesday. So if something happened last Thursday, it comes to us basically within that seven from whatever respective district. And then that day, we would decide to either do it that day or count, put it on the calendar for a specific day or, you know, that's the other, that's the other thing I'm looking at or.
If your board's going to file, if the timeframe applies to you, which again, I would think it would, if the timeframe applies to your board, then you'd have to make the decision on that Tuesday to, to appeal as a collective because otherwise, again, the point of the, the seven days would be lost.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I, I apologize, I'm, I'm going to disagree with Ms. Grant because you have seven days, decisions are made on Thursday, you can have till next Wednesday to be able to file that. So it doesn't have to be an extra item on Tuesday. As long as you file your application for the appeal, it doesn't have to be an extra item or it could come two weeks later if the agenda is full. As long as the filing is completed, then it can come to the board to see if it will be taken up as an appeal. I don't see where it has to be automatic the next Tuesday or it has to, I, the, the rush to get in timeliness is the filing. And as long as the filing is done, then it could come back to the board for, are we going to see this? Do we approve of this for an appeal?
But the filing has to be done by the Board of Supervisors, not by a particular supervisor.
Ah, that's where my.
Just looking at the plain language of the zoning ordinance as it exists, it, the appeal has to be filed by the Board of Supervisors, which would be an action item of your board, which would require you to meet.
I was thinking the filing was done by an individual and then it would come to the board for figuring out if we want to see the appeal and then it would come back as an actual appeal. So.
It would be conditional.
Perhaps there's something in that ordinance that speaks to it, but absent that, the plain language of the zoning ordinance is Board of Supervisors.
Okay, I apologize.
All right. So I think, I think it's pretty clear where we're going with this now, right? I think we're on the same page.
I, I have a question on A when you get to it.
A?
A, part A.
We haven't taken A.
Yeah, so with B, in regard to B, are we considering this policy? And from what I'm understanding, there's folks that are already not ready to move forward with this and it, we feel that basically it's already covered in another capacity. So B, I will end that topic of discussion and move to A in that, I've read it already. So we know that, I'll give the floor to Susan Parker.
Again, this was submitted for your board's consideration. Do you want the background on the conditional application? She already reviewed it earlier and we just need to know, should this board decide to hear the, I'm not hear the appeal, but grant the waiver to her fees?
So my question on that, since we have decided on B that we're not going to move forward with that, should we give this applicant a period of time, like 24 hours, now that we've decided that we're not going to do the fee waivers, give her the opportunity to be able to pay those fees within 24 hours? Or does it die? I mean, how does that work? Because she was thinking that she might get a fee waiver, she doesn't look like she's going to get it. Do we give her that time to pay it? I'm just, just put it out there.
If she can pay it, she should have paid it when the opportunity of the seven days was there. So I think, I, it would be weird if she could pay it today but couldn't pay it when she submitted. I, I don't, that, that, to me is.
Ms. Grant?
I believe, and the CEO can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the appeal was accepted as timely filed, but only if the board approved the, and appropriately filed, but only if the board approved a fee waiver. So the risk there is borne by the, the person making the appeal.
Yes.
Yes.
And so, and so that's kind of why I asked earlier, like in a situation with, in regard to A, and I should have said that as A, is, and you asked, are we going to consider it, right? And that, that was like my, my question, the crux of my question was that with that, could we now entertain an extra item to consider it? And that, that would be the same pathway that we would take with that. So like, let's say that it was my district and I says, okay, I do want to hear it today. And then we would say, well, no, let's see if everyone else wants to consider it as an extra item. And if they didn't, then it would just go. It would be, does that make sense? Am I hearing it correctly? Am I interpreting that?
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting what you're saying.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't, I, that avenue was always available and is clearly easily found on our website as well. And that is not the avenue that was taken. And I think that because of that, we, we have what we have and I don't know that we can circumvent or maneuver and take an off-ramp for something else.
Okay.
That, that's my personal opinion.
All right. And so I guess what I'll do is, any other questions on this before I open to the public so they can?
Well, I guess my comment on that, I guess any supervisor can bring up an extra item if they believe it's necessary to bring up an extra item and it would be this board to decide if we want to bring that extra item and go forward with it or not. So one individual board member could ask for an extra item to be brought to get this appeal moved forward, but it would take three votes to be able to have that extra item put on.
Four.
Or four, or four.
Because it's an extra item.
So it is still a possibility, but.
Again, I wanted that to be clear because you're going to see that happen from your board. So, all right, is there any other questions or, that, that made it clear, more clear for what I was asking and what direction we would take and what I wanted to be heard as well. So thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
And just to make myself clear, I do not want to move forward with the waiving.
Let me open it up to the public first and then we'll, we'll go from there, right? All right, anybody in public that would like to speak on this?
Good morning. My name's Trey Sherrill. I was the consultant working on the Mambacho Mountain Organics major use permit application. I just wanted to provide some context to, to the board about the, the reason for the appeal. After the hearing, I spoke to Ms. Moss for about 20 minutes. I thought we had, I thought I was able to answer all of her questions. The, the appeal filing was a surprise to us. The, the issue here is that the well on her property is an unpermitted well and therefore we don't have any information publicly available on the well. You know, we, we queried both the Department of Water Resources and the County Environmental Health Department to determine any information on, on the well on the property and there's just nothing out there. And so for that reason, we're, the only way for us to determine if there are any potential impacts from my client's well and use of water from their well to Ms. Moss's well would be for, A, for her to grant us access onto her property, then we would need to remove her well pump and, and then do a proper inspection of the well to gather the information necessary. So if you granted this appeal.
What we're talking about today is a waiver. So that's all we're talking about. I, I just, I want to clarify that, Mr. Chair. You know, we're not.
We're not looking at the appeal.
I, I understand.
All we're talking about is Joan Moss's request to waive the fees for an appeal today. That's it.
I, I understand. I'm, I'm trying to provide context as to if you granted the waiver.
Well, there's, we don't need the context on that because we're basically just discussing if we're even going to consider the appeal. And when, as of right now, we didn't provide the waiver and the waiver's not, it hasn't been essentially provided because we were not even discussing that. So.
If I can provide assistance, I, I think that we're not here for the merit of the appeal, it's whether or not the appeal has the ability to be waived for the costs.
Okay.
And I believe that you're talking specifically to the merit of the appeal.
I, I, I think it's, yeah, I was just trying to provide context on if we could even, if we could even make, if the appeal were to happen, if we could even satisfy.
And if that was the case, then we would want to take what you're talking about right now.
And then I guess, speaking to a, a, a waiver, it's just, as you kind of said, there, there is going to be a lot of these requests. If, if it, if this one goes forward, I believe it would set precedent and we would, we would see a lot more.
And that was what was discussed in B, so we're, we're good to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment? And thank you for that, for helping me with that. Supervisor Simon?
I didn't want to get off track.
Yeah, no, and.
Michael Wagner, I, so I, I went up in kind of a, a different position than usual for most of these meetings. You know, for me today, I think it's important that people like Ms. Moss, who maybe don't totally understand the things that are going on, let alone have the financial ability to deal with them, still get taken care of. So, you know, Ms. Moss came to me, obviously I'm on a totally different side of the street typically in these types of scenarios. And she had brought a lot of things forward that are, you know, water, you know, volumes of water, things like that. And all of that, I really kind of tried to help her understand how that's already been understood. It's already been contemplated by the Board of Commissioners or by the Planning Commission and kind of irrelevant at this point. I think where she really missed or hasn't been able to get across is that the, the procedure in which the Planning Commission took a look at her issue or this particular issue had, had a material fact to it that was missing, that she hasn't really been able to put forward, I think, to any, anybody to totally understand. And if you don't mind, even though this is about, I guess, the merit as opposed to the waiver, I think that the waiver in certain circumstances would be important to how, why they're asking for that waiver beyond the fact that they don't have the money. But if there's something materially missed or maybe misunderstood, I think that there should be a chance to bring that forward.
And then we've already discussed those avenues. And so we talked about it in depth, basically what, what, what steps they can take in case that moves forward. And that was basically what, rather than a waiver, which we're not even going to basically look at.
Of course.
It's, it's for them to either appeal with the funding that it takes or to.
Absolutely. And I don't, I don't think adding this whole new policy for waivers is a good idea at all.
We, we discussed that.
Okay, fair enough.
All right. And so I have one last hand up, I think, online, Craig Litwin, if you'd like to unmute and if we could stay on task with.
Waiver or no waiver?
Yeah.
Yes, Chair. Again, Craig Litwin from 421 Group. So the, in brevity here, there is a process under the zoning code 5830 for a supervisor to bring this forward to the Board of Supervisors in order to waive fees. So that exists. And even though it wasn't known to the appellant, it is still the policy that is on the books. And the avenue for such of a waiver was already present at the time that the appeal was filed by the appellant. So creating a precedent where you're granting a one-off fee waiver, even though you have a policy in place that provides for an avenue for that to happen, really just kind of moves in the wrong direction from a policy perspective. You're creating a, an exception to the rule for a single individual versus having rules on the books which already exist and can be pointed to. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we'll close public input. Thank you, Craig, for your insight. And so I'll bring it back to the board and, and we'll, we'll see where we go from here.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny waiving the fees for the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision for major use permit UP 18, sorry, I'll get it back here, 1919, Mambacho Mountain Organics LLC, Dan Westfall and Catherine McGuire, located at 9205 Mambacho Road, Kelseyville. located at 9205 Mambacho Road, Kelseyville, California, 9261 Wildcat Road, Kelseyville, California, on June 2nd, 2022, due to hardship.
Second?
We'll have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I didn't vote, I just, can you please repeat your motion?
Oh, okay. Make sure I got it right. I think I had it right. I move to deny.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to hear.
Yes.
I just, I started reading the rest and I'm like, due to hardship.
I put, I move to deny waiving.
So aye is my vote on that. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's all right.
All right. So, and it, any knows? All right. Motion carries. So with that, we are at, we are 12 o'clock. So I think it'd be a good time if anybody wants to push forward or if we want to move to a lunch break.
I think, I think we have some good conversations coming up, so I think it'll take some time.
All right. So we'll go ahead and take a lunch break and come back at 1:00 P.M. Thank you.
As ready as we're going to get.
Yeah.
I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right. Welcome back from our lunch break. We're, we're going to go ahead and take up the polled items on the consent agenda. And so with that, we will start with 5.11. Second reading of an ordinance rescinding Lake County Ordinance 3093. And so basically this is a second reading of what we approved the prior week. And it was polled by a citizen of the public. And so Joan Moss, if you'd like to come up and speak on why you wanted to pull ordinance of the second reading of the ordinance 3093, we'd appreciate that.
I did not see the number after the ordinance, but I wanted to know what this ordinance was concerned with. It doesn't describe any words that, that explains the ordinance, 511, 512, and 513. For some member of the public who hadn't read all the documents about this, it's just some ordinance. We, I want to know what kind of ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And so Ms. Grant?
The description of.
We'll, we'll come back to the next one in a second, so.
The description of the ordinance is in the first recital. Ordinance 3093, adopting a sectional district zoning map number 3.7B1401 for Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project.
Okay. And did you hear that, Joan? Oh, so I'll read it to you. In the, in the, in the attached ordinance, it states, adopting a sectional district zoning map number 37B1401 for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project.
Thank you. And the next one?
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yes.
Maybe Joan, for the next time, if you just need a clarifying question, maybe you can ask one of the supervisors instead of pulling an item? I don't, I don't know. I think that's a question we could have answered without having to pull an item.
Okay. So is it, is there any other public input on this?
So 5.12 and 5.1.
Joan, we're only addressing one right now. We'll go on to the next one.
Okay.
Okay, so, so with that, closed public input. I'm not seeing any other comments about 5.11. And so bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the second reading of an ordinance rescinding Lake County Ordinance number 3093.
Ms. Grant?
You can just offer it for passage.
Okay. You just offered the resolution?
I offer it for passage.
The resolution's been offered. Or, I mean, I'm sorry, the ordinance has been offered for passage. Do I need a second or, I'm confused? Okay.
Just a vote.
So can you conduct the roll, the roll call?
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye, thank you. And so our next item is 5.12, second reading of an ordinance rescinding Lake County Ordinance number 3094. And your question obviously would be the same.
Yeah, I want to know if it's concerned with the Gwinoc or something else.
It, it states, so I'm going to, Ms. Grant, go ahead.
It's in, again, the first recital, adopting a sectional district zoning map number 3.7B1402 for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project.
And so it, it's the same. It's just another ordinance number. So it was the same situation, what we're doing. So is there anything else you'd like to add to that, Joan?
Are you going to take a vote again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And so with that, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on behalf of this item? I don't see anyone on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I forget what I was supposed to say.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer for, for the ordinance.
That's it.
There we go.
The ordinance has been offered. Kimberly, please conduct the roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Simon? I mean, sorry, Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. And so on the next one, we have polled 5.15. Approve the California Mutual Aid County and Intramedical Health Regional and Cooperative Agreement for Emergency Medical and Health Disaster Services. And this comes from the Director of Health Services. I don't know if anyone else had any. Would you want to state why you polled it first?
Ask a question about it? Yes.
Okay, and so, okay, we'll, we'll see where we can go from there on that. Okay, so Jen?
I just wanted to take disadvantaged community. Is that the same thing as poor community or is it something different? Disadvantaged community waiver. I was wondering if it was people without any money or people who are disabled or what that word might mean. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone on from this department that, I think it's Jen Baker, or anyone else from the Health Services Department? Jonathan, I think I see you on, sir.
Excuse me. Not sure if he's actively there.
Well, I guess if we look up disadvantaged communities, it's, it's areas in California which suffer most from combination of economic health and environmental burdens.
Where does it say that?
Including poverty, high unemployment, air, water pollution.
Didn't it say that somewhere?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it says anything of that nature. You're, as a matter of fact, now that you've read that and I'm looking through the executive summary of it, it talks about something, mutual aid resources to combat emergencies requiring public help response. So I, I don't know if the question pertains to this specific item that she had. Right. And then she's calling in, I think she's having in the, Jen Baker is, is she, so.
Disadvantaged, that's on 519.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, yeah, so do you have another question for?
5, 5, 515.
I'm going to venture a guess that 515 was actually supposed to be 513 because it makes no sense that she pulled two of the second readings of the ordinance and the third.
That was my question too. Same thing.
Yeah.
I'm, I apologize. Those are the numbers she submitted to.
Yeah, I, I have the, the sticky that says what she wanted to pull. So I thought, all right, so where we're at is 5.15 and I think.
I think this is one of those items that we need to pass because it's absolutely a necessary part of our emergency response.
All right. And so I'll, I'll go ahead and, I don't see any other public input, so I'll bring it back to the board. Ms. Baker, I'm pretty sure that we, we figured out there might have been a confusion on this one. So we'll bring it back to the board for action. And I think with that, we need to.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the California Mutual Aid County and Intramedical Health Regional and Cooperative Agreement for Emergency Medical and Health Disaster Services and request the board chair to sign.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. With that, we have 5.19. And this is the, what was referring to the disadvantaged community. So I'll read it off. Approve letter of support and disadvantaged community waiver of match to the application for the 2022 Nonpoint Source Grant Program and authorize the Lake County Board of Supervisors to sign. And this is from Water Resources. I know that the question's already basically been posed. And so we have Scott Deleon. Scott?
Good afternoon. So the question was, what is disadvantaged community? And within the state program, they have it defined in the water code. And it's based on specific, and I'm reading directly from the memo, specific census median household income. So our county qualifies under the state definition. And as a result, you know, we're afforded specific, I'm not going to say luxuries, but we're afforded some relief from certain requirements of the grant. And so because we meet that, we, we are asking for that waiver of the match. And so that's, that's what this letter is about.
Thank you for that, Director Deleon. And so I hope that answers the question that was posed. And so with that, I will once again see if there's any comment from the board. I don't see any right now. And so I'll open it up to the public for any comment. And I'm not seeing any, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the letter of support and disadvantaged community waiver of match to the application for the 2022 Nonpoint Source Grant Program and authorize the Lake County Board of Supervisors to sign.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. And should I just announce what we discussed at lunch break? Director Deleon, we're, we're going to go ahead and push the item, the closed session items on next week. And we'll come back with you on that, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And, and I do have a non-timed item and I'll be prepared for that if that's, hopefully can be taken up here relatively soon. Thank you.
Which one that is? Should we just go to that one? 7.7? We'll go ahead and go to 7.7, which is a consideration of award of bid for the Cooper Creek at Winter Springs Road Bridge Replacement Project. Bid number 22-03 Federal Aid Project number BRLO-5914078 to West Coast Contractors of Coos Bay, Oregon, in the amount of $1,492,809.74. With that, I will give the floor to Public Works Director, Scott Deleon.
Thank you very much, Board. This item is to award a contract for one of our bridge replacements. We publicly bid it in accordance with county advertising requirements. We received three bids, I believe, and those should be summarized in the bid tabulation. Hopefully that got attached. It's not on my copy. But anyway, we received three bids. The low bid was West Coast Contractors out of Oregon. And we recommend that you approve this contract and authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Any questions from the board?
I should note, and I apologize for interrupting. I should note that this project is fully funded through the Federal Highway Bridge Program and state toll credits. So this is 100% funding for all phases of design, construction, contract administration, inspection. It's 100% funded through those programs and is, there's zero local money put into this program. So very thankful for this program and the opportunities it provides. Otherwise, this bridge would, which currently is a Bailey Bridge because the old structure is, is, is not usable, would be a long, long time from being repaired. So we've done a good job of taking advantage of this program.
Thank you for the clarification on that. Any other questions? Open it up to the public for any questions, comments, or concerns on this item? Not hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board for action. It's in my district, so if anybody would like to make the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move, here, let me get this right. I move to award the contract for Cooper Creek at Winter Springs Road Bridge Replacement Project to West Coast Contractors in the amount of $1,492,809.74. And authorize the chair to execute the agreement and execute the attached notice of award.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Deleon.
Thank you very much, Board. I appreciate your consideration today. Thank you.
Of course. All right. Let's see, do you have any preferences, CAO? I see you, yeah.
We can go ahead with 7.2.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to 7.2, consideration of transient occupancy tax voluntary collection agreements. And this will give it to Susan Parker, CAO. And I think I can see Pat on, so I'm pretty sure he has some involvement in this as well.
All right. So good afternoon, Board. Patrick Sullivan, County Tax Administrator. This item is a follow-up to the previous discussion we had on April 12th regarding voluntary collection agreements for transient occupancy tax and the possibility of doing another investigation, a sweep of all the unregistered rentals and trying to account for all of those. The last direction we had from your board was to pursue both, if possible, on a parallel track. But as staff has gotten into this more, our, our initial findings is that it, it will not be possible to pursue them both simultaneously. The nature of the agreements with Airbnb and Verbo would basically preclude us completing an enforcement effort. If we were to go through the time to do an RFP, to get a software provider like Host Compliance that we had before, there are other competitors out there. So whichever one we ended up going with, once we began those efforts, it could take 12 to 18 months if we were to have the staff capacity. During that time, we wouldn't be able to sign an agreement because the nature of those agreements generally has included a waiver of enforcement efforts against existing debt. So we wouldn't be able to go after those back taxes for the people we found. So just as, as we got deeper into it, it doesn't appear that there's a feasible way to do both at the same time. Essentially, we're asking your board to provide direction about which one you want to go with. If it's still our understanding, your board ultimately wishes to have voluntary collection agreements, staff would recommend that we just proceed directly with those. There wouldn't be any great benefit or gain to going through that enforcement effort in the meantime, if we are ultimately going to use these collection agreements. And there's the functional limitations of staff capacity, both in the administrative office and the Treasury Tax Collector's Office. So if your board has any further questions, I'm happy to address them, but that's the overview of where we're at now.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Supervisor Paeska?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate you looking into this. And, you know, it, it has been a struggle. You know, do we let go of all the people that are non-compliant and give up their back taxes? But given, given the capacity issues that we've got with staff right now, it's probably best to just move forward with this. We will catch everybody that's on these platforms once we're engaged. It's just we won't be able to go after them for back taxes. So I, you know, at some point, we just need to make a decision and move forward. And, and I, I think that's the right thing to do. And if we, if we do move quickly enough, because a lot of groundwork has been done, we could have this up and running during the summer season, potentially, potentially.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I think this sounds like a much easier way to go into the future rather than not going through the voluntary collection agreements. Most people, if they want to keep their, their homes filled up, are going to want to be part of a major online website. That just makes it easier because there's a lot of traffic going through there. So I think we move forward with that and hopefully within the next year or so, maybe you can come back. And if we think they're still residual, at that point, maybe we can do another side investigation to get as many people onboard that are outside of the VRBO sites that are online that are still kind of skirting from paying those taxes. Because I definitely want to aim for fair business practice where everybody is doing the same thing, not just some. But I think that the first sweep we did got a whole bunch, and I think this will get even more. And so I think this is the direction to go.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public for any comments or concerns. All right. I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom, so bring it back to the board for direction. I think it is, right?
I agree with what the, the, both of our previous supervisors said. Yeah, I think moving forward is the best way to go. So I agree with the recommendation.
I do too. I agree.
And I do too, even though it's a done deal.
You can always sway us.
Just say no, just to say no. Yeah, no, I'm in agreeance. Thank you, Pat.
Welcome. Thank you.
Tax collector elect.
All right. Let's see. Now we have our 7.3.
7.4.
Oh, 7.
Sorry, no, you're right, 3. And he's still on, so.
Okay, good. Consideration of Cannabis Equity Grant Applications Processing. And with that, I'm pretty sure that it's, CAO is going to give the floor back to Pat.
Well, thank you again, Board. This is a update on new information regarding the cannabis equity grants, considering that we've closed our first round of applications here for local cultivators and businesses. Just to highlight some of the results of the application period, we received 49 applications that at least appear initially to be viable and would meet the program criteria. What we need to look at now is how to proceed with those applications. We previously provided an overview to your board about the different program models that are available to us, and our plan remains to focus on fees, local fees and taxes essentially that can be paid directly. We wish to contact the state, the governor's office that runs this program. We can request a budget modification now that we actually have these applications in our hand, and we can advise them that we would like to focus on paying those county fees. One of the most important ones would be the county taxes that are owed. There are people that submitted an application that actually owe back tax to the county. It's the remainder of this last year's tax bill. And then there are others that are going to struggle to pay next year's tax bill. We received word through the state that taxes are an eligible expense. So we could route this funding to cover their cannabis tax bills. Can also be used to cover local permitting fees, so those are fees that are due to CDD. Also can be used to pay fees due to ag. So anyone that has remaining licensing or permitting fees, we could use it to pay that. Otherwise, the focus would be on county taxes. This serves a few different points here. A lot of other jurisdictions have struggled to actually get these funds out to local businesses. There have been problems with different businesses not being banked, or for instance, the entity that holds a permit not holding a bank account, or, or other, other issues along those lines where it's, it's created complexities and complications that have prevented a program from being deemed to have their funds dispersed by the state. And the deadline we're running up against is that we recently learned the state may even bump the next application window up to September. That would mean that of our initial award, we would want to have expended at least 50% of those funds, based off our last understanding. So although our equity program does allow for other more complicated and complex ventures, given the timeframe that we're on, we, you know, staff believes it would be best to focus on funds that can be quickly dispersed in an effective way to the local businesses. And paying those county fees, whether they be permit fees or taxes, seems like a straightforward way to do it. It meets the audit trail requirements for the state. It is easily dispersible. Since it's within the county apparatus, we can pay the department directly out of the grant funds that we're currently holding. So in staff's opinion, that would be the best way to proceed. The other, the two other points we want to raise are that originally staff thought $25,000 would be the cap of what we could award. Given the number of applications, and given that we received that second round of funding, we believe that we could raise that ceiling to $50,000. That would be enough. Our median grows for cannabis are around an acre. So that's enough to pay both the tax bill for a lot of applicants that are in this program, in addition to covering some of their permit or licensing fees if those are applicable. The other point that your board may wish to consider is that someone having not paid their tax bill is grounds for a permit revocation. CDD could ultimately take action to revoke that permit through the Planning Commission. Since they would have an application pending with the county for this cannabis equity funding that would satisfy that bill, I think staff's just looking for direction from your board on, on how to handle that, whether there should be some sort of grace applied, whether we treat that bill as being pending or not yet determined because we may be able to use those grant funds to cover it. I think staff's just looking for direction about how to proceed in both those, both the cap of $50,000 and how to handle delinquent taxes for those that are applying in this program.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll just go with one, yes, to the $50,000. Let's make sure we spend this down. And two, how many applicants do you have that aren't paid up that, from last year's taxes that have applications in? Do you know what that number is? And I apologize for not emailing you that question earlier.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that up. We just completed with help from Kim in our office, actually. We completed a database with everyone that submitted an application, but we haven't tied that back into the data from CDD or Tax Collector. So I don't have, I don't have the figures on how that might match up to their interactions with other departments. I do know anecdotally that I talked to several people that had an outstanding tax bill. So that's something we're going to have to look into. We also need a little bit more time to match up some of these applications. An unfortunate part of this is that the way a lot of these applications are submitted by applicants and business names, it's going to take a little bit of work to match up some of the documentation that's necessary and tie them all back to the correct permit, but we're in the process of doing that.
I'm going to, if you can allow me, Supervisor Simon, I'm going to convey the same message that he gave earlier, which is how do we make this as simple as possible for you? They need to make sure they provide the right application name to connect it to it. That should not be our investigation job. That just seems like that's adding a lot of unnecessary work on our staff, especially when the idea is you're asking for money that eventually is free to them to ask for if they meet a specific criteria. We should be doing the least amount of work possible, not the entire legwork for them. I apologize for conveying your previous comment for, for this one, but I think it fits just right.
Common sense, absolutely.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, we do have multiple applications that are required follow-up. Speaking with other jurisdictions that have gone through this, this does seem to be typical. And what's, what we are going to have to determine is, it seems like the accepted practice through the state is that they do want some sort of outreach that everyone has a chance to correct or amend their application if there is some sort of shortcoming or provide additional documentation. But especially because we are on a bit of a clock here with the state in terms of making sure we disperse these funds, we are going to have to make a determination at some point of, of how much time we give someone. If we, if we contact them and they don't provide the additional documentation we need, we may not be able to fund them in this round, and we're, you know, they, they would still be able to apply in the future, but we are going to have to determine a cutoff.
Yeah, no, I, I'd like to see that if it doesn't meet something simple, it just gets denied, and they can go ahead and try again if they want, but yeah, I don't know. Just putting it out there that I think that if you're asking for free money, you should be doing the legwork for us, not vice versa. If it's, I almost want to put a conditional, if it's less than 10% of the applications that have been approved that are, have filed for an equity grant and have not been able to pay their back taxes, I'm okay with moving forward and saying that they can go ahead and continue to use their use permit. But if it's more than 10%, I think we need to have a conversation again. But that's, I don't want to just give a clear blanket yes or no on that one without knowing a little bit more data.
Supervisor Pyska?
With the applications that you received, how much, how much funding is being requested compared to what we've got available?
So that's an interesting point. There are people that wrote up requests that would exceed the $50,000 mark that we're talking about. We left our application actually a little broader than was necessary, partially because the state wanted that data. So we had people put in other projects they were interested in doing, so we have an idea of what kind of funding was out there, or what kind of funding request would be out there. Because we can include that information in our September application, and that may drive the state to give us more funding. We did let people know in the actual application itself that it was likely only $25,000 would be permissible. So while they could put in for more, which we encouraged to list what their actual need was, it was clear that $25,000 would likely be the cap.
Okay, so if we bump it to $50,000, are we going to be able to fund the 50% by September?
Yes. If we could do $50,000, then assuming some of these applications ultimately don't meet the criteria, we have 49 applications. If we could get 25 or more of them, basically if half or more of them were to qualify, we could hit our threshold easily.
Okay. And I, you know, I, I think that the fees and the taxes are the easiest way to go, but are there other needs that have been identified?
Yes, there's a host of other needs that have been identified. There are people that need help with, at least anecdotally from, haven't been through all of it, from what I've seen, there are people that need help with various improvements on their property, different business costs. There are people that are essentially saying they need help with capital just to get through the downturn. One of our problems is that it's very limited what the state equity programs will actually let us pay for, even if we were to have the ability to pay it. So that's going to take more work to see whether those actually fall in to our equity criteria. But the problem for us was that, given the funds need to be expended on such a short timeframe, we didn't really dive that deeply into it. We, we could if your board wanted us to.
But maybe those people, those applicants that need that assistance in other ways likely also need assistance with fees and taxes. And so maybe during that reach out, their need could just be kind of recalibrated.
We also have, there may have been some misunderstandings within the applications. We had multiple people say no to the request for funding of their local tax bill or permitting fees. And we, we don't really understand why they would say no. We think it's because they would prefer that these other projects be funded. So we do plan on contacting them to, to let them know that those, the funding of the local fees and taxes would be the way that they could receive funding in this round, to give them an opportunity to amend.
Great. Thank you, Patrick.
All right. Anything else from the board? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, so I just want to, just Supervisor Sabatier said, did too, I did, number one, absolutely, I think moving to $50,000 and also giving you the, the board, giving you permission, at least I'm, I'm in favor of requesting the budget modification with GoBiz. The second part gets a little more complicated, but I completely agree with the general statement of, you know, if they're, if they're in the, if they're one of the 48 applicants, that we do hold off until we figure out how to get the funds either to them or they, or they deny the request or the opportunity. Like you said, some folks weren't in favor of doing the fees or the taxes, but at least after today, hopefully they'll get the message. This is probably the way we're going to go for right now, so either you're in or you're out, and that would be their decision.
All right. I'm not seeing any other, any other comment. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just a quick question. We just did budget last week with an anticipation of about $3.5 or $3.6 million in taxes. If all of this is utilized for tax purposes, was that accounted for in our budget? Or is this $1.9 million a part of the $3.6? I'm just kind of curious what your, the thinking was in creating the $3.6 and where this fits in.
So I, that would be more of a question for Stephen Carter, but based off of our discussions, I believe within that $3.6, this is accounted for within that, that some of that, there would be cultivators using these funds to pay, that some of those taxes in that $3.6 would have been paid with these equity funds. I do not believe that we would anticipate these, these payments are officially increasing that amount. I think it was built into that number.
Okay. Just really hoping that was not the answer.
Sorry.
All right, so I'll open this up for the public if there's any comments or anybody wants to comment on this item on the agenda. 7.3, please come on up.
Hello, Michael Wegner here again today. Thank you guys so much for bringing all these things forward. I think it's a huge handout to help people get back to where they need to be, and you guys have really moved forward in a fast and efficient manner to get everything on the table. So I just want to tell you thank you for everybody in the cannabis community.
All right. Anyone else from the public? I'm looking on Zoom as well. All right. I will bring it back to the board for direction. Supervisor Sabatier?
I do want to ask the board what their thoughts are, and in my mind, I'm conflicted on it, but at the same time, there are some people who are waiting on this, as stated by Mr. Sullivan, to pay their back taxes, who have a application that is turned in. Does the board feel that if an application has been turned in with the anticipation to pay off their back taxes, if approved, that they can keep going with their projects for this year, or that they should be placed on hold until all of this is finalized and paid off?
I think they should, you know, if they have the application in, they've met the deadline, and we're able to do it, I would say continue moving forward with this year.
Yep. I guess it would depend if the money allowance will cover the taxes that are due. Perhaps if they have more taxes that are due than what we're going to be giving them at an account.
I may be able to speak to the point raised by Supervisor Scott. Because we're targeting smaller operations in this, almost all the applications are for cultivation size of one acre or less, which means the $50,000 cap would cover any delinquent tax bill.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
And I think that continues. It's been such a challenge as we're trying to establish this new industry for the smaller local grower, and I think this is, you know, a positive step forward for that. I know a lot of growing pains, but I think it's real positive. So thank you for clarifying that, too. That's excellent.
No pun intended.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right. So with that, do you, we have the direction that you need to move forward?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Board.
All right.
I'm, I'm looking at Ms. Grant. Since we're asking the state to make changes to our budget that we already approved, should we do a motion to make that change to $50,000?
That's a good idea.
Okay.
All right.
Then, Mr. Chair, I move to increase the maximum initial award from the grant Local Equity Plan, Cannabis Local Equity Plan, from $25,000 to $50,000.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I think we have the direction you need, right, Mr. Sullivan? To move forward?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, and we will now move on to our next item on the agenda, which is 7.4, Consideration of the Followed Advisory Board Appointments, Lucerne Area Town Hall. The application, the applicant that we received is from Kurt McKelvey. And anybody have any comments or, no? Anyone from the public? And I'll bring it back to the board for action, and if anybody can make the motion for me, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Kurt McKelvey to the Lucerne Area Town Hall.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So 7.4 is done.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, we can. So let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 1:45. Thank you. Welcome back from our break. We are now going to take up our next item on the agenda, which is 7.5, Consideration of Appointments to the Commercial Cannabis Ordinance Task Force. And this will be presented by Community Development, and we have Director Mary Darby here with us to present on that item.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Mary Darby. I'm the CDD Director for the Community Development Department, and today I am going to share with you the applications that I have received for consideration for the Commercial Cannabis Task Force Ad Hoc Committee Team. That all goes together. Team is not a separate word. It just goes all together. Just wanted to share a little background with you. So on May 24th, it's over. On May 24th, I made a presentation before the Board of Supervisors illustrating where we are currently with the issues that we've, we've been receiving, issues and concerns as it relates to the existing cannabis, commercial cannabis ordinance. On May 24th and, I'm sorry, May 25th and May 26th, staff, CDD staff conducted. and, I'm sorry, May 25th and May 26th, staff, CDD staff conducted cannabis workshops. The May 25th workshop was geared mostly towards the cannabis industry, and the May 26th workshop was geared to more towards the community. We received 30 participants at the May 25th workshop and 21 attendees at the commercial workshop on May 26th. So we had a total of 51 attendees at these workshops, and we received comment cards accordingly based on their concerns or issues. We shared this workshop videos. We did about a five-minute clip of those workshops at the Board of Supervisors hearing on June the 7th, and at that time, the board encouraged staff to create the task force ad hoc committee at the June 7th meeting. On June the 8th, the applications for the ad hoc committee was posted on our CDD website, as well as it was a part of this Granicus website as well on June the 7th. At the hearing, the Board of Supervisors hearing, it was, the, the composition for the task force was developed as follows. There were seven appointee positions, and that was the tribal government, Lake County Cannabis Alliance, the community members representing northeast, as well as northwest, community members representing southeast, as well as southwest, the Farm Bureau, the Ad Commissioner, as well as a cannabis industry member. To date, as, well, as of June 20th, yesterday, I have received a total of 12 applications, and here it represents that I have not received any applications from a tribal government. We did reach out to tribal government through our cannabis officer, code enforcement officers, to solicit applications. I received one applications from L, one application from LCCA, four applications from the northeast, northwest as a community member, five applications from southeast, southwest community member, one application from the Farm Bureau. I am holding the position for Ad Commissioner, and one application from the cannabis industry. This totals a number of 12 total. Applications came in in two different ways. It came in either through the chief administrative officer, offices, through Johanna, or it came in through CDD with my name on it. I have researched all emails regarding applications that have been submitted, and what I have and I'm presenting today is what I have received. I wanted to highlight some of the applications that we have here in particular. So again, the tribal government, I have not received any applications. From LCCA, I received one application from Jennifer Smith, who address, represents that she lives on the south area. I received five applications from the community members from northeast, northwest, and those members would be Lori Corella. I have highlighted some of the things from the applications just to jot your memory. She shares positives and negatives of living next to a large grow. I received an application from Bobby Dutcher, which is a real estate person, as well as he served on the former, participated on the former ordinance, commercial cannabis ordinance. I received an application from Donna Mackowitz with Bluebird Recovery, and I received an application from Don Van Pelt, which is a part of the Lake County Winery Association, and I've also received two letters of recommendations recommending him to the board. Further, I received five applications from the southeast, southwest community. I received an application from Sabrina Andress, who is a attorney, Jesse Kood, who represents the U.S. Cannabis and Hemp Research Center, Richard Lavelle, which is an architect and deals with land use development, Roberta Lyons with the Red Bud Auto Bun Society. She represents the south area, Erin McCarrick with LCCA Vice President, and also sits on the Clear Lake Planning Commission. I received an application from the Farm Bureau, from William West from the north area, and the Ad Commissioner, I have added Catherine Vanderwall. And last category is the cannabis industry, and I received an application from a Christian Callahan from the south area. I just put a note on my PowerPoint to state that all workshops that were presented on May 25th and May 26th that was held at, from the board or presented to the board will be uploaded. I just received that link, so that link will be uploaded as to the comments from the commercial cannabis websites, I mean workshops, and they will be uploaded to the website, CDD website. In terms of next steps, the Cannabis Program Manager will take this project on after the appointment from the staff. He will be responsible for scheduling meetings, discussing logistics, formulating goals for the task force, and following up with the Board of Supervisors. And that will complete my presentation.
Thank you, Director Darby.
Thank you.
Supervisor Paeska.
So I think Erin McCarrick would be one of the seats with the industry. I was just looking at her application because she...
May I speak? Is that okay?
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Okay, so in my presentation, I made no recommendations on who should sit where. I've only provided you with the applications that I have received, and further, what I've analyzed is where they're located, whether or not their applications came from the north side, or the south side, or what organization they presented.
Okay, so, but she would be the second one from the industry that was submitted?
I see. Supervisor Sabatier?
Oh, and I, oh, sorry, I have one more.
Go ahead.
And then I asked you out there, but I, I did hear that Autumn Carcy submitted an application, and maybe she's on today and can explain where, where she submitted that, and we'll have a better understanding of what happened.
So unfortunately, I have not received an application for that particular individual, neither hand-delivered or through any digital platform, and I can always go back and check the digital platform as well, but I have not received an application from that individual.
All right, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I wanted to say, I wanted to say the, something similar that I had heard about some problems with getting the applications, whether, with multiple locations of where it went, I don't, I, I don't know the explanation, though I'm ready to move forward with some of the names that are on there. But I am concerned that we have zero tribal government, and I know that the AB 52 and the understanding of those things is an important aspect of ensuring when we're reviewing and revising this ordinance that it's well-prepped with that in mind, and so I, I don't know how to handle that. I'll wait to hear from other supervisors, but that, that's definitely a concern for me to move forward and, and not have that representation.
I, I reached out on Friday after the agenda was posted to some local government with an email. I received a, a response to the email, but it wasn't actually anything, like it wasn't the application or anything like that. So I know that there, there's interest, but the, the application wasn't submitted, and so, and so I would need probably more time to garner that type of, yeah.
So, yeah, I agree. I just think you're going to need a little more time with the tribal government, as you said. I've heard interest too, but haven't heard anybody say, I'm going to get the application, I'm going to sign it.
Oh, your microphone, sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you. Vice Chair. Yeah, so just a little more time is needed, but I, I would like to move forward to fill in the six position, because we've done that before with many different boards, building them through, risk reduction authority being one of them to get that started. So my thought would be to move forward today with the six, and then hit the ground running, hopefully get a tribal representative on there by our 28th meeting, if not the, the following meeting. So we're not slowing the momentum down that we have, because 12 applicants, that's a pretty good response to what we were asking for.
I think that would be a great idea. Okay.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I'm going to look at Ms. Grant as I make my statement here. I'm going to try to make it as connected to this as possible. In reviewing the applications, and this is not only related to this, but we have a request for have you committed a felony, and I know that AB 1008 was passed for employees, not for community members, or anything like that. But the idea behind AB 1008 was to reduce discrimination and open up the opportunity to folks who may not be given that opportunity. There's a certain shame that comes along with saying yes to that question. We're dealing with an, an industry that we're kind of forgiving those kinds of things from the past. If it was related to possession charges or, or whatever charges from the past, and they're still allowed to get an application, but in our application for a use permit, but yet for this, it almost kind of maybe not, makes people not want to fill that part out and, and might prohibit us. And, and, and I'm not saying it's the reason for, but as I review our list, and I, I review AB 1008, it doesn't, our list doesn't necessarily provide a diverse group, yes, in the categories that we created, but not a diverse group from just looking at our community itself. I, I don't, I can't fix anything, or I can't change anything, and I can't converse about what I'd like to see, but I'm just wondering if we can bring it back to discuss the application itself for a future agenda.
Yes, you certainly can bring the application back. I can tell you that a number of jurisdictions include that question, a number do not, and so that's an issue for your board. If you think that it discourages inclusivity, then you can certainly eliminate it. There are some suggestions I would have also in terms of fleshing out potential conflicts and time commitments to make sure people understand what they're volunteering for, so it would be a good subject for discussion.
And so if I have consensus from the board, then I'll make sure that we bring that back on a future agenda, but no fact on today.
I'm in agreement with that, you know, the felony question, as it pertains to cannabis, you know, you know, those types of felonies. So, yeah, definitely.
And so I had a, so, yeah, I'm fine with that, too, so.
Thank you.
But I had another, just a question real quick, because I was confused. When you mentioned Jesse Kood, you mentioned that he was a, was a member, or he was a citizen of the, the...
UC system for cannabis and hemp?
Yeah, I'm confused about that, because it says, "I'm a member of the UC Cannabis Hemp and Research Center. I've attained, attended forums, webinars, et cetera," but then I have an email that specifies...
Well, I mean, if, if that's a candidate that we would be choosing, then maybe we would just have him come back in.
Okay.
Another meeting.
Cool, because I was confused as to how we would appoint him with, is he going to be in the cannabis group, or is he going to be part of the citizens group, if that makes sense? I just, I just noticed that on there, so I was just quite, you know, asking the question, that's all, yeah.
Okay, so I have him identified as on the south side of the community member, but I just highlighted some of the, some of the items on the application itself.
Okay, okay. All right, yeah, no, I just was, didn't know if he was part of one or the other, but, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Can we just, can we look at the slides again that has the groups, and maybe we can go one by one?
Thank you for asking that, because I was...
I'll knock one out at a time.
Would you like to see?
The, with the names?
With the names.
How they're grouped? So I, I think it makes sense to have Jennifer Smith with the LCCA.
Do we need to open this for public comment, so maybe we can just go ahead and do a motion to get these?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Whatever the chair wants. Before action, you, you want to open?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll go ahead and open it up for public, and then we'll come back to this later, right afterwards. You're right. Thank you for, for, thank you for that. So we'll go ahead and open this up before we discuss the, the list to the public, so they can, if there's any comments or questions about this item.
Hello, Michael Wegner. Ms. Darby, if we could see the list, it'll help me out a little bit, too, if you don't mind.
It's two different pages, so we're going to have to go one at a time.
Uh, if you pop it, so I can see the names associated with the different, I think, one more, okay. All right, so I think, because it looks like it's a bunch of different ones. So William Wise with the Farm Bureau, he's a very, like, I, I would say like a very open-minded person. While he does represent the Farm Bureau, he and I have had some very good conversations. And while we kind of stand on different sides of different topics, we are always able to conversate, so I think he'd be a good person to have. Jennifer, being the president of the LCCA, is kind of a given for the LCCA. Erin, as opposed to the community member, in my mind, she would drop into that cannabis industry position, and although she is associated with the LCCA, she wears a lot of different hats. I think she has a pretty good understanding of the diversities, where Jennifer is really focused more on cannabis cultivation. Erin is a much more broad spectrum, really around retail, distro, and all the different encompassing aspects to it. Of course, nothing, and no means that against Ms. Callahan, but I think those two would really hold, and they participate in a lot of what we do, so it would seem like a hand in. Ad Commissioner, we only have one of those. Bobby Dutcher, I think, would be another good candidate. While, again, he and I don't always agree on everything, he's pretty well-rounded as far as the effects of the industry on people surrounding, whether it be environmentally, culturally, all the way down to economics. Tribes are left out, so, and that would leave me kind of open-ended with the fourth community, or number four, the second community member. I think having another person that would be associated with the hemp or cannabis, maybe that's not the right pick, because when I look at this, I see two cannabis people, two community members, you got the Farm Bureau, and then tribal government, and the Ad Commissioner, to me, are icebreakers. Catherine's not against cannabis. It's not like, you know who. It, it's not like that.
So, and you're wrapping up.
Anyways, I think that we're at a really good point. We're really narrowing it down. Maybe just also to remember focusing this committee on what they're doing and not leaving it too open-ended, so you guys can get the results you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anyone from the public in the chambers? And I'm, I'm not seeing, online, I can't see. Well, let me see. Yep, I have some hands up. So I'll start, so I'll come back and bring it to the public online, and so we'll start with Autumn Carcy. If you can unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Autumn Carcy. I actually did put in an application online through the digital submission. I'm in the cannabis industry and have been for many years. I started one of the first design-build firms in the cannabis space. I've worked in about, called Cultivo. I've worked in about 20 states and three countries developing cannabis facilities for our clients before selecting Lake County, and we have a couple farms, an application process, and a, a processing facility as well in the county. I'm a resident of Kelseyville, and I've worked with several planning departments in different jurisdictions all over the world to kind of help streamline the process of understanding cannabis facilities, labs, processing facilities, and cultivation and land use. So I think I would be an ideal candidate for this position, and I just wanted to throw my name in the hat in case it was missed.
Thank you.
Is there a way to find that application somewhere?
I was going to do another search on mine.
Okay.
And I've also been a keynote speaker at dozens and dozens of conferences on the sustainability of design-build for this space, and I'm happy to answer any questions about my background or experience.
Okay, we have, Johanna, you have your hand up, please, if you can unmute and respond, please. That would, that would be helpful.
Okay, I think there might have been an issue with the link to the advisory board application, and I'm, need to figure that out with IT, because I received those, and I stopped receiving them on June 10th, so if it was after that, I haven't received it.
With that, I think we should move this item to next week if we don't have all the applications in hand that people submit in a time, in a time of matter.
So what I'll do is I'll let people comment out on this, and then we'll move forward and decide what we'll do from there. Thank you, Johanna, for that insight. And what we'll do is, thank you, Autumn. Next, we have Jennifer Smith. If you can unmute, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, this is Jennifer Smith. I first want to thank you for appointing an LCCA-designated seat to this. I think it's really important that we have the industry organization a part of this process. I think it's important that the LCCA will be able to gather information from all types of licensees across the entire county and be able to really consolidate valuable information and streamline the process of input. And so I really want...
consolidate valuable information and streamline the process of input. And so I really want to recognize that and thank, thank the board for acknowledging that. I'd like to also talk about some of the community members that I've had personal experience with. Bobby Dutcher has been well-versed in the cannabis industries and needs. He's been a part of the evolution of these ordinances from, from the beginning. And he's been diligent in working with clients to make sure that they are purchasing properties that not only meet the ordinance guidelines and land use parts of the ordinance, but that also, you know, kind of fit in the neighborhood and make them good neighbors, so to speak. He's been very diligent about driving his clients to the right areas. I am concerned about the process of this and knowing that this is to build an ordinance. This is not about whether we should have cannabis in the industry. And I think that that position needs to be restated so that people don't think they can be on this board and stop cannabis. I think that that needs to be very, made very clear. I've also had great interactions with the Autobahn and Roberta Lyons. She toured our farm and was very insightful and very open to listening to what regulated cannabis looks like, and that it is not this big scary illegal farming that we see so much in the sheriff's logs. And I felt we had some good meetings, and she was receptive to what we were doing, and expressed her concerns, and was very aligned in making sure that we do what's right, but also that, recognizing that we're an ag commodity and that when you get to these legal farms, you really realize that this is agriculture. Would love to have more cannabis representation on here. With that being said, obviously, I work hand-in-hand with Erin on a day-to-day basis on cannabis in the county as it is. Kristen is also very active in the cannabis industry. I am concerned that my initial application was not received, and I am grateful that my second application is in here now, but I am concerned that Autumn's was not. And so I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to continue this hearing if need be. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Dearam, if you can unmute, you have three minutes.
My name's Richard Dearam, cannabis developer and consultant and real estate agent.
We're having a hard time hearing you, Richard.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we're having a hard time. I think there's some scuffling going on. We can't hear you over that. So maybe, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Yeah. And so I'd like most people on there, Jennifer Smith, obviously spectacular, Erin, awesome, Autumn's great, Bobby Dutcher's fantastic, Roberta Lyons is great. And I know that this is to build an ordinance that's going to make Lake County a place to come and grow. And I'm a little concerned with Mr. Van Pelt, as I've heard him speak in the Board of Supervisors against cannabis. And I think we don't need any animosity in this group of people. And with that, I'll let it go. Thank you.
Thank you. Phone 1447, if you can unmute, you have three minutes.
Hello. Hello, Chris Jennings. Can you hear me?
There you go. We can hear you.
Perfect. Yep, Chris Jennings over in Clear Lake. I'm one that submitted an application yesterday. I emailed Mary directly, and I don't see my name on the list, or heard my name on the list. So maybe it's in the spam or junk or some other folder. But yeah, I'd just like to throw my name in the hat as well, like Autumn, wanting to do, and a few others that seem like they didn't make their, their application, made it to see you all. With that being said, I've been in Lake County in the cannabis industry for about 13 years now. Everyone wants to say they're a part of the first ordinance. The first ordinance was with Bob Mezzaralli when we had him as the CDD. And I was on that ad hoc to help shape and make the first cannabis ordinance. I had the first major use permit, had it Clear Lake for cultivation, processing, distribution, a few other random items that I know the county used kind of as a template when they're making their CEQA, initial use permit write-ups and everything. I have nursery. I own Lake Sederbo Solutions. I'm probably the true definition of seed to sell. I am fully vertically integrated. I know policy very well. I, if I don't know policy, I'm not afraid to go out and find it. I have a good advisory team that I work with. Yeah, so I just want to put my name in the hat. I've been around for quite a while. I helped with Clear Lake cannabis policies. I'm on all their ad hoc committees. And I just believe I know more than just cultivation. I know more than just, you know, retail and distro. I kind of know it all. I've been the forefront of all these licensing processes since it began. And I think I should be looked at and considered for the role.
Yes, go ahead.
And that's it.
Thank you.
I'm looking, thank you so much. I'm looking back at my emails. I did receive an email yesterday at 10:12 a.m. from a Chris Jennings, stating that he hopes that he's not too late. I am just seeing this email. However, our cutoff deadline date was June 15th. And in that, in my presentation originally, it did have a deadline date of June 15th. In other applications that have come in, besides the one, I'm not sure about Autumn Carcy, when she submitted hers, because I wasn't privileged to that information. But Jennifer Smith's application came in on June 16th. Christian Callahan's application came in on June 20th. And Erin's McCarrick application came in on June 13th.
Right. And I see Erin's got her hand up, so I'll go ahead and, Erin, if you can unmute, you have, you have three minutes.
All right, I got the unmute. Hello, Erin McCarrick, Clear Lake. Just a quick, yeah, I didn't know how to designate what area to be considered for, but I was putting my name in for an industry spot. I also support maybe an extension because Autumn and Chris and all the other candidates are also very good. Happy to serve in any capacity and appreciate this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see phone 1447, if you can, for brevity, I'll let you unmute. And I think you raised your hand for a reason, so I'll go ahead and open it up for you for a second.
Oh, yeah, Chris Jennings again. I actually just spoke, but I just want to say, I, I hear what our CDD said as far as the cutoff date, but I also noticed timestamps of people that submitted their application yesterday as well and made it to the, you know, to the list of potential candidates for this position. So I feel that I probably shouldn't be subjected to, I was too late. If other people were after the quote-unquote deadline and they were not too late. So I think it'd be really good if we could extend this a week and everyone who had an application issue, maybe hand in applications by hand and have backup and maybe get email confirmation. And yeah, I just, you know, a lot, more info the better, better polling platform, the better. So I'm sorry, that's all.
Did you, let's see, I see Johanna's name up one more time, so I'm gonna let her. I'm gonna close-
I just tried the link and it works. And there's just one step that you have to verify your email. So if you didn't click that, it might have not gone through. That's all I have.
And so if, if you didn't verify your email, then it might not have been submitted. That's probably what took place. Because one thing I do know is, when, when Mr. Van Pelt submitted his, he emailed me along and asked and said he came back or something. So that's when I just forwarded it to whoever to talk to him, and then it got figured out. And so I just know that, her statement about June 10th, that there was other people that had, you know, dealt with that as well. So I'm not sure how it'll go from there, but, but thank you. So was there?
Is that, are there more hands?
What's that?
That's it? Okay.
Yeah, there's no, no, no more. I closed public input as well.
So, um.
Go ahead.
So I don't know how we want to handle the Farm Bureau seat, because although Will Weiss is a member of the Farm Bureau, he is not in a position to speak for the Farm Bureau. And so is this a seat that we want to open it up to the Farm Bureau's discretion, like their executive director? Or do we want to just select somebody that had it on their application? So that's a question for us. Because I had a conversation with Will about it yesterday. And, you know, he lives in Lakeport, so he feels like he's a community member, but he is, you know, he's in agriculture, and he also participates with the Farm Bureau. So his perspective is not going to be the Farm Bureau's perspective.
Did you have an answer?
Yeah, my, my belief was that that was up to the Farm Bureau itself to make a decision on whether the director would be at the, in that position, or whether the board will appoint somebody to that position. I kind of thought that because I saw Will's name on there, that that was the case. So I'm glad you brought that up, because I was gonna say, yes, by all means, let's put Will, because I agree with the comments that were made, that he's level-headed, he's an expert in the industry, he understands how it works. But I think it needs to be provided to the Farm Bureau, and the Farm Bureau itself needs to make a decision on who the appointment is.
And that's-
If that doesn't, hasn't already happened.
Well, that, that was what I was thinking, too, which is why I called him to get clarity on everything. So.
So can I just reiterate that these are only the applications that I have received? I'm not making any recommendations. And I only took the highlights from their application so we could jog our memory about who the applicant is. So, I'm not necessarily saying this is the Farm Bureau person. I'm saying that he submitted an application, and in his application, he stated that he works with the Farm Bureau.
Yeah.
Yes. And one thing I'm realizing, too, is the email that I sent out Friday was still after the deadline, basically, for, for the tribal member aspect of it as well. So that potentially could have went that way, too. They wouldn't have, I don't know if they would technically count or not, but if someone would have submitted yesterday as opposed to, that, that would be the only submittal yet after the deadline. So, I mean, just highlighting that, because I didn't think about that when, when it was set through. I know that we did say 15th was the hard deadline, right? June 15th, right?
Well, yeah, I think we set the deadline for the 15th, so we'd have candidates to be able to discuss today. If we don't have somebody filling that spot, I mean, tribal still needs to get their applications in. But I think we, you know, originally, we should have been looking at those that had got their application in in a timely matter. But knowing that there might have been a glitch in the system, I think we need to push the deadline again.
Johanna, was there any applications submitted that you have that haven't been included here that were from the tribal, the tribal member status, if you can?
No, I haven't received any from the tribal governments.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So the, the applicants in question are for the cannabis industry seat. So do we want to just wait, push this all to next week? Or do we want to wait on that seat and the tribal seat and fill the others today?
I think we need to wait, because we don't know if there was other applications that didn't go through. Maybe we need to republizize this. That's my thinking, but.
I agree. I agree, because we might have a whole lot more for the other options as well. Because we're only hearing from the people that have made it to the meeting today or who have been able to hold on this long in the meeting to be able to get to this item. So I would agree. And because of the fact that we're Tuesday today, we would basically be reopening it up for like 48 hours until Thursday, which is when things are due. I would suggest we have a longer time period than just two more days added on. And so that would probably mean July 12th is the next potential meeting, which I think puts your timeline that you proposed to us, it pushes it back just a little bit.
Nope, just holding it.
Just in case.
Yeah. I don't like pushing it off either, but it just sounds reasonable with the, the general questions about the application. And then need to make it very clear that whatever you gotta click, you gotta verify your email so that goes through.
Or come on in and turn it to the paper.
Yeah, hand it in, in person. But I would agree with, with pushing it forward at this point, after all the discussion.
Yeah. Is there a way, I mean, this is just looking forward, next time we have to do this, some kind of automated response, if you're gonna, you know, where your application's been received, get the email kicked back to you?
It's an IT thing, but yes. Agreed. It's nice to get that confirmation that you've accomplished what you're trying to get done.
I'll just note that, you know, and I'm in agreement, but I just note, too, that there's also, as there's always an agreement in, in the statement, there's always the argument for people that are, that want to be appointed now to say, well, that's, I submitted mine on time, and I did my due diligence to send it to whoever to get in. So, but I'm just only stating that just because. So, but I, I do agree that if there was, on the 10th, there was no opportunity for people to be able to submit afterwards, then that's, yeah, that's still five more days that, you know, there was no opportunity for-
Well, it's, we have some really great applicants, and it's the opportunity to make sure that we, we have the best selection.
Yeah. So I'm in agreement with, with the consensus of the board regardless. I just note that, just because it's, it's gonna be brought up anyhow, and I just, I hear those words in my head, so I just, so.
You, too?
Yeah. So with that, I think, are we at that juncture where we're gonna go ahead and go with what was stated? Or is there another option, or? Yes, Ms. Darby?
I, I agree with the conversation of the board. However, I would like to recommend that right now, we have two locations in which the applications can come forth. I would like to request that they only come through one avenue. And Admin, I don't know if they, if you would like for them to all come through Johanna, or if you want them to come through CDD, but I just, whichever point we take them through, I think it should be one, one location. And then in terms of receiving an automatic reply, I don't have that capability. I would have to, of course, go through IT. I don't know if Johanna and Admin, if they have that capability, that once they receive the applications, they will get, receive an automatic response. Because now mine's is manual, so if I receive an application, I say, "Thank you for your application. We'll consider it, and we'll meet you at the board for a final presentation." So I don't have that capability. I don't know if Admin has that.
Johanna, I see your hand up.
Okay. And then the last thing is that we do have the application posted on our CDD website. It was a post-it the day after the Board of Supervisors meeting, which was on June the 8th. We can leave it there. That won't be a problem. But we can change the deadline date.
Johanna, I see you have your hand up.
Adobe Sign does send you an email back that you have signed the agreement, and it gives you like an actual, like, PDF, where you can open the agreement and see your agreement or application or whatever it is.
Thank you, Johanna.
So are we in agreement that it should go through Admin Office, not the CDD?
Isn't that status quo for applications for committees?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
So it looks like we have a path forward. And what is that?
I'm sorry. And so my last question is, in terms of presenting the applications before the board for a review and consideration, does the format in which I provide it work best?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it does work. That's why we wanted to, can we see the, the list again? Because it was, it worked really well.
If it's possible to have all of the categories with, I don't know how many more applications we'll receive, but if it's possible to have them all on one screen so that we can kind of, because we're probably gonna move some people around into different categories. So being able to see that would be helpful, but not sure how, what that list will look like.
So just one clarifying question, because we said we had closed it off on a certain date, and we got the applications after the date. So the applications that we have received to this point with the extension to the 12th, they don't have to resubmit again?
I would say, my recommendation would be no.
Okay, just want to make that very clear. Everybody who has submitted, and we do have it in-house, doesn't have to resubmit another one. So just wanted to make it very clear.
But if you submitted and your name was not in the list today, then please make sure to resubmit.
Yeah.
And, and does that mean, and I'm glad you brought that up, Supervisor Simon, if we're coming back here on the 12th with this, does that mean we want a deadline of no later than Wednesday, the 6th at 5:00 p.m., so that we're prepared to implement that on our Thursday submission for the agenda?
Yep.
That would be my recommendation, in order to put the agenda together.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the date?
So Wednesday, the 6th by close of business at 5:00 p.m. July 6th, not just the 6th. Let me be more specific.
Thank you for doing that. All right. So are we all in agreement on the path forward? I think we are. And Director Darby, are you clear on what, is there any other questions?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will close item 7.5, and we will move on to our next item, which is 7.6. And let me read that. So consideration of proposed findings, of fact and decision in the appeal of David Hughes' Appeal AB 21-05 Lake Vista Farms. And this is Anita Grant.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You have before you the draft findings of fact and decision in the Lake Vista Farms appeal by Mr. David Hughes. The findings are as stated. If your board has additions or changes, you can certainly make them on the face of the document and I'll ensure that they, they're in the final copy. At this point, your board is being asked to take two actions today. One, to, a motion to approve the findings of fact and authorize the chair to sign. And then second, a motion to grant the appeal. Your board's vote was four to one in favor of granting the appeal.
All right. Are there any questions or Supervisor Sabatier?
So there was one thing and I mentioned it to Ms. Grant. She said usually, if you don't mind my repeating what was on the email, she said that usually it is not a part of the findings, but I wanted to see if the, I would like to see in the timeline, and I'm bringing it up right now, it does not say that the appeal was submitted on November 24th, 2021. It goes straight from a decision to then talking about the appeal, but not stating exactly when the appeal was submitted. Just for me, if this goes any further, it would provide the entire timeline to acknowledge that it was received within seven days after the approval from the Planning Commission. And 11/24/2021 is the date that the appeal was submitted.
Ms. Grant?
The, just, and there's, that's a very easy add and I can certainly give you language right now for number four of the findings to add that. I would just simply note that there is a provision that the board incorporates by reference the Community Development Staff Memorandum and exhibits wherein the timeliness of the appeal is stated. And that's usually the case of why it's not included. But under number four, you could simply add at the end, the appeal of David Hughes of the, of the Planning Commission decision was timely filed on November 24th, 2021.
Other than that, everything looks good on there.
All right. Open it up to the public for any comment? Let me see. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed findings of fact and decision in the appeal of David Hughes' Appeal AB 21-05 Lake Vista Farms with the amended as suggested by Ms. Grant.
Was suggested by Supervisor Sabatier.
As suggested by myself, yes.
Second.
Oh, so I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion carries four to one.
Move to make, all right, make a motion to grant the appeal.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. And that concludes item 7.6. Let's see. Did I miss anything here except for calendars, right?
I believe so.
So, right, so we'll move on to calendars and we'll start with Supervisor Piska.
Okay. So tomorrow, whoop, tomorrow, we're gonna be meeting with staff and with our state elected staff to discuss next steps with our local tree emergency. And then Thursday, we're having Fire Safe Lake Workshop all day at the Castle in Lucerne. And that's, that's actually Thursday and Friday. I'm probably gonna have to miss the AAA governing board meeting. Are you gonna be there?
I'll be there.
Okay, good. So that's a workshop that we've been working on. It's like, it's the second phase of our, our work towards building the collaborative and the countywide fire safe council. And it was recommended last year in our CMAT to do this work. And so we're just moving forward and we've got all of our stakeholders invited to participate. And it's, I think it's gonna be a really great workshop. It's actually three separate workshops and they're provided pro bono through Fire Adapted Communities Network. So we were able to get that assistance, which is really phenomenal. So I, I am looking forward to that. So that's where we will be, Lucerne, Thursday and Friday. And the 25th on Saturday is the open house for the Cobb Arts and Ecology Center, which is, I don't know if you guys know about this, but it's in Cobb, it's in Lucklumen area and it is a, it's a center for doing ceramics and they have these giant wood-fired kilns and they're basically world-class potters that do internships and live on this property. So twice a year, they do this open house and this sale and it's really incredible. And then Monday, I've got my meeting with CAO Parker and then back here on Tuesday.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, I start off with an Audit Committee meeting. If I still have time, I'll join CC4C during their meeting after that. Joining the first five meeting at 2:00 PM, a fire district meeting at 4:00 PM and a school board meeting at 6:00 PM. Thursday, I'm going to check in with Ms. Grant. I, I want to be at that workshop on Thursday. I don't see anything in Brown Act violation regarding that, but I just kind of wanted to check in with you. There's interest in the city of Clear Lake to do firewise work and I just think listening in and understanding rather than trying to inefficiently go around dealing with two other board members. I think this is an opportunity where it has already been made public and advertised as such. And I'm planning to just listen. So just kind of checking in.
If you're, if you're simply going to audit the meeting in terms of listening to it and not participate in it, that doesn't pose a problem.
Okay. I just wanted to check in on that. I appreciate you all putting that workshop together and I just think it's advantageous for as many of us to learn from that as possible. The following day, I will not be able to be there, but I do have a meeting with some department heads and then also going to join a Lake County Housing meeting to discuss homelessness and housing. That's all I have for this week. And the following week, I have a meeting with our senior center in Clear Lake to see what I can do to help them out with some of their issues. They're looking over some software to keep better track of their Meals on Wheels and their other programs in order to enhance their capacity to obtain grants. And then meeting with our CAO and preparing for a meeting for Tuesday. That's all I got.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, so just finish up whatever time we get down here today. And then tomorrow, as Jessica said, we are, we have a meeting in the afternoon on tree mortality. But I see also, I have two things going. The Blue Ribbon Committee too is going to be meeting for the quarterly meeting. If it gets over, I'm actually jump on the end of that one too.
Yeah, it's incredibly.
And jump into that. Okay. Do they do Zoom still or?
Yeah, they do Zoom, so you can jump in on that.
So I'll do that one. Then on Thursday, we have the workshop be over in, in your area, over on Thursday. And then Friday also, you know, I'm gonna let everybody know, I was planning, I was thinking I was gonna do two days, Jess, but I'm probably not gonna be there on Friday. Friday is a big day for me and from my point of view, it's my birthday on Friday. So, you know, I'll probably go out and do some golfing that day instead. So I'll get all the work in. I'll be extra there on Thursday, but that's the plan for Friday.
Good for you.
And then Saturday, Sunday, Sunday don't have much. You know, there's a Benefits Committee meeting on Monday afternoon, which I'm, I'm gonna want to point to you, the board, so I've signed up for that for our Benefits Renewal Committee, for insurance. And then I want to report the Workforce Alliance in North Bay. I know Jessica had a meeting on Friday where she go to the tree mortality. I went to Workforce Alliance in North Bay meeting and, you know, we'll make sure that they get out here and Bruce can get a report as we move forward. You know, it's just challenging with our four counties as we're moving through it, obviously always focusing on Lake County, but there are always challenges in our region. One of the things we've worked diligently here and I want to thank both admin department and everybody who's responsive when we did this, even Senator McGuire and Cecilia Agar Curry, representatives, is having a EDD office here locally in Lake County. I think that's real important. You saw some of those numbers were just reported. Lake County unemployment rate is really low here in Lake County, which is great. But having that EDD office in the one-stop center where people can go in and get referred to different areas is real important. Kind of the wraparound solution we're talking about and everything else. And so as, as we move through that process in this year, I am the vice chair now, the chair and vice chair. So probably next year I'll be the chair. So, you know, we'll continue to bring the information here, but reaching those displaced workers is real important for, for our county and many counties surrounding us. We are some of the bigger counties, Moran and some other places have different challenges, but need to continue working on that. So I thought that was a really good meeting. I did attend that by Zoom because, you know, as you know, there were, there were a couple of COVID exposures down in the office that they had. So we went back to Zoom for that one, just to be safe with everybody. But I thought it was a, a real good meeting. And yeah, I would have nominated Jessica for vice chair, but she wasn't there, so.
Thank God.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair Scott?
Yes, tomorrow, Agenda Review at 8:30, Audit Committee at 10 o'clock, First Five at 2:00. On Thursday, I have a Hope Rising meeting at 9 o'clock. And then on Saturday, I will be attending the Chamber of Commerce, sort of a tourism ambassadors program. And then on Monday, I will also be spending some time with the chamber at 1 o'clock in the afternoon and then getting ready for Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you. Did you have something else?
I was hoping that Supervisor Simon would give us a brief summary of how Middletown days went.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, I was thinking that too. Middletown days, I thought it went really well. It was good attendance, both at the parade and down at the park. You know, I thought things went well. You know, it's always great to just see the youth and, you know, to get out there with the Jim Kana and everything like that. Finishes up with the Hyde ride. If you haven't seen it, go check it out one of these years. Basically dragging someone on a hide behind a horse, which couldn't be any more of who we are here in Lake County. But it was a good, it was a good old, you know, it was just another good weekend. The weather was perfect. I think we had 54 entries for the parade, which was pretty robust and, you know, it went well. So all of the things went well, both Saturday and Sunday. You know, I think we served around 500 people with the food. So I got to participate in that and, you know, do the barbecuing and serving folks. So it worked out, it worked out pretty good.
Your district knows how to throw an event.
Yeah, well, Lower Lake, with Lower Lake Street Parade that they brought back to.
Oh, yeah.
A little jealous of that, that we got 29 running right through Middletown. We can't do that. But the, the Lower Lake days with the street fair, what they've done there is just, yeah, awesome.
I'm getting a little jealous over here, looking forward to the 4th for our festivities in Clear Lake. But yeah, nice.
All right. Leaves me with, with my calendar. So I'll go ahead and start out with a report. I went to the RCRC meeting, which was held in Nevada County, Grass Valley, basically. And so the first day, basically, we went on a tour that showed how the history of their town, basically of, after it was founded, basically talking about the gold, the gold mines and things like that. And so following that, we held our Golden State Finance Authority meeting. And with that, discussion about just basic perfronctuary business, but also one of the biggest things that I, was, they gave a report on was the, it's called the Down Payment Assistance Program, Assist to Owned. And if you're a county employee in one of the, the counties that are participating in the Golden State Finance Authority, then county employees are eligible to do, to be a part of this program. And so I sent a flyer to administration and asked the Carolyn was her name, Carolyn George, to reach out to our department and to our Human Resources Department Administration to set up some times and, and to have that discussion with some of our employees. And so, so that was the first day with the Golden State Finance. Let me go to the other, oops, sorry, that's, I was working on policies that, okay, so then the, the next day, we conducted the, actually first, we went to the CAL FIRE TAC Center where they had their airport and where they had all their equipment showing how the CAL FIRE, you know, where they centralized their focus on fires and some of our, some of, some of them come and assist us in some instances. And so they showed us the, one of the airplanes fly out and showed how low they go and what they do when they drop the, the red, what is it called?
Retardant.
Yeah, the retardant. And, and so then we went to the actual communities or the, the centralized dispatch center. And so was able to see some, some video even that they have in the area and some of the maps that showed even Lake County. And so they knew Mike Wink. I mentioned that to one of the, one of the gentlemen. He talked to me and said, oh yeah, I know, I know Mike Wink. And so we were just talking about that. Following that, of course, went back to the RCRC meeting and talked about issues on, in rural California and basically talked about the budget. That wasn't it, but there was, you know, among other things, one of the things was the budget and how the, the state budget and how the, right now, the core, at its core, basically says SB 154 authorizes $3 billion in spending, including 235.9 billion in general fund expenditures and sets aside $37 billion of combined reserves in the budget stabilization account, the special fund for economic uncertainties, the public school system stabilization account, sorry, and the safety net reserve. And so basically there is going over the fact that it takes 12 days from the day it was initialized for the governor has the opportunity to sign it. And I think we were waiting at that time still and I think we might still be, I'm not sure. We talked about other funding mechanisms, of course, in regard to Lake County. So I won't bore you with all the other, other ones unless you ask, but broadband, of course, waiting for the broadband middle mile funding of 1.1 billion in '23 and '24 and '24 and '25. And homelessness, 500 million in both '22, '23, '23 and '24 for homeless housing accountability and prevention program. Cannabis allocates 20 million for a cannabis local jurisdiction retail access grant pursuant to pending legislation pursuant to a pending budget. Trailer bill eliminates the cannabis cultivation tax, keeps the cannabis excise tax rate at 15% for three years with the ability to adjust the excise tax rate, taking into consideration additional revenues received by December 31st, 2025, and sets the minimum baseline for allocation three funding for youth education, environmental restoration, state and local law enforcement programs of 670 million with 150 million general fund set aside to backfill any revenue lost to meet the baseline. Of course, they did go into depth about Care Court and there's some initiatives on that. I think we heard it previously about how there's going, a call to action. So to speak to some of our elected officials in Assembly and State and some of the concerns that we have in regard to this. Let's see, I think the water, I'll go over water real, real quick. Provides 100 million for dam safety projects. Some, I don't know if that means anything to us, but provides 77.6 million for ocean protection and sea level rise, extends in Proposition 1, flood project extension of liquidation to ensure projects in progress may continue and 1.5 billion for purchasing and retiring senior water rights for conversion of those water rights into environmental uses. And so, yeah, with that, it was, it was a decent meeting and we've got a lot of information networking, talked to some folks about some of the things we deal with. A lot of them are having concerns with homelessness and dumping and all of that as well, trying to find measures and things to attack those issues. And so.
Mr. Chair, I did have one last thing. I just, I just, I just want to make the statement. You know, obviously Father's Day, well, you know, every, I hope everybody enjoyed it, but Juneteenth celebration happened down at the MAC Center in Middletown. And obviously, you know, a very monumental day, you know, as we move forward. I know it's now a federal holiday and everything. I just, I want to make mention to it today because how important it is to minority groups in this country as we move forward and, you know, really look at, you know, our history and who we are. So just, you know, I know it was celebrated here by different groups and I want to thank the MAC Center for putting on that event locally in Middletown. So just wanted that mentioned before we end today.
No, I'm glad you mentioned that. I was tuned into the live, the live stream and whatnot and had some folks ask why, you know, apparently why the county hasn't, you know, engaged in that as well. But, you know, when you look at the, when you look at it, California State hasn't exactly passed it yet for some reason. I, I looked online and it said that they haven't passed it, you know, as, as federal, as the way the federal holiday has to have that specific day as a holiday to like not work or whatever the case may be. And so I think that's something that needs to be taken up and hopefully it will, so.
I have one more thing too.
Yeah.
Bacon Fest was back after missing it last year. And so it's a, the Kelseyville Business Association. Association is rearing up for another fantastic season of events and so Bacon Fest was the beginning of that and it was amazing, there were so many people out and it's a great way to celebrate Father's Day.
Nice, nice. And so just real quick, I'll go over tomorrow, I have Agenda Review, 9:00 AM, right, 9:00 AM?
8:30.
8:30, sorry, see, oh my goodness, 8:30. So Agenda Review at 8:30 and then Blue Ribbon at 1:00 PM. It's in Clear Lake or you can attend via Zoom. Let's see, I'm meeting with the Upper Lake Senior Center on Thursday in Upper Lake and then I'll have the AAA Board on Thursday, the Governing Board meeting at 1:30. Friday, Golden State Connect at 9:00 AM and then 8:45 CAO meeting with Susan Parker and then we'll go from there. Supervisor Sabatier?
Can I have a redo as well? So I had my first meeting, I submitted an application to NACO, which is our National Association of Counties, and it was a competitive process to be chosen, but I was chosen to be on the Economic Mobility Leadership Network. I had, our first meeting was yesterday, I was with Alabama, Georgia, Missouri, as well as California. There's 32 other members, these were just the new members that were selected. The idea is to learn from each other and, and figure out who has created economic mobility or has made a change in their economic mobility within their communities and to present those projects that were successful for them and seeing how we can implement them locally. This will also include field trips throughout the entire nation to go visit these things and to really see it firsthand rather than just hearing about it and with a culmination visit next June to Washington DC to just kind of network and have those conversations there. I'm excited about the potential. I know that we had a conversation about economic development during our budget time. I think it's a perfect opportunity and I sure hope that I, we get the best benefit out of that. We are in there with Butte County, who was also selected. I don't know if you've all gotten to meet Deborah Lucero, Supervisor of Butte County. She is the representative for the Paradise area, so she's gone through a lot as well and so she was within that group as well of new members that has joined NACO for that specific subcommittee and looking to work with our administrator and bring back home all of the information that I gather and seeing how it is that we can get those things implemented, want to make sure and let you guys know about that.
All right.
Congratulations, good job.
All right, good job. All right, so with that, I think that concludes calendars and we will go into closed session, which I'll read, so because we're pushing 8.1, should I still read it off? How does that work, Ms. Grant?
I think you should read it off and then just say that at the request of the department head, you're pushing, putting that over.
All right, so 8.1 in closed session is Public Employee Evaluation, Public Works Water Resources Director and as stated, we will be pushing that to next week. And then 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Public Health Officer. And with that, we will go into closed session and thank you for tuning in with us and for a good meeting. All right, welcome back. We have come out of closed session and there is, although there is no necessary action to take, we have however, accepted the resignation effective immediately from our Public Health Officer and so I just wanted to come out of closed session and state that for the record. With that, the meeting is adjourned.